Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. At the beginning, I can ask everyone to please stand as you're able for the Singing of Boat Canada. As we don't have a choir tonight, we will be the choir. Thank you very much. It's been moved by councillor Ionidas at the minutes of the regular meeting held January 30th, 2017, and the special meetings held January 23rd and February 13th, as mailed to the mayor and councillor be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There not being any. And with respect to communication to file, you'll notice the flag request for the Irish Real Life Festival, March 11th to 18th. We do have one presentation to make on today's agenda, even though it's not listed, and it's as a result of three awards that we received as the city of Kitchener from the Economic Developers Council of Ontario. As you may recall, a year ago, we launched our new economic development strategy, Make It Kitchener. Earlier this month, we received three marketing and branding awards for the Make It Kitchener Strategy from the Economic Development Council of Ontario at their president's gala. One award was for the printed publication, one was for the overarching brand, and the third one is the one we're most proud of. We received the Lieutenant Governor's Award for Best of Show, an award given to the best example of outstanding effort in economic development. We continue to see amazing engagement on the Make It Kitchener Strategy, and these awards demonstrate how well this strategy resonates, not only within our own community, but among experts in economic development across the province and across Canada, with the two awards we won earlier from the Economic Developers Association of Canada. So I will pass these along to members of council. And the Lieutenant Governor's, one is on the center table, and just acknowledge and thank both our economic development staff and our communications staff, and congratulate them for the work done in obtaining these recognitions. We'll now move into our delegations. And our first delegation is Frank Prospero from our Neighborhood Strategy Project Team in support of the strategy, listed as clause 10 of the Community and Infrastructure Services Committee Report. And just before I pass the mic over to Frank, we had an opportunity earlier this evening downstairs to thank the many volunteers who have literally given hundreds of hours of their time to developing the neighborhood strategy, which council will be considering this evening. And as I said downstairs, and as you are about to begin, on behalf of all of council, thank you to all of you for the work that you've done in bringing this strategy to the forefront. So with that, I'll give the floor to you, Frank, and I'll remind you, as I do all delegations, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Great, thank you. My name is Frank Prospero. I'm president of the Williamsburg Community Association and a resident of Ward 5. It's been my pleasure to be a member of the Neighborhood Strategy Project Team. You already heard from others on our project team two weeks ago, and earlier this evening you had a chance to mix and mingle with them. But what I want to add to is why I'm so excited about Love My Hood. I see Love My Hood as a collection of do-it-yourself projects. Instead of being told how to build great neighborhoods, we residents get to do it ourselves, and we get to do it our way. I'm quite excited to see what each neighborhood comes up with, and I have no doubt each neighborhood will grow and change differently, reflecting the unique people who live in there. All these unique distinct neighborhoods add to a thriving city and builds a sense of community. I also believe Love My Hood will foster a growing sense of pride in these places people call home. After all, when people can put their own personal touch on something, they take pride in that place, whether it's a park bench, a painted crosswalk, or an entire park. Here's a small example of how we put our personal touch in Williamsburg. Our Neighborhood Association has enjoyed putting on activities for Neighbor's Day each year, and the event continues to grow. This past Neighbor's Day, along with several other activities, we did an art project where a local artist painted our rink shed with flowers, and over 75 kids from the neighborhood added their handprint and the year they were born to create a time capsule within our neighborhood. This is simply a piece of art. It won't win any national art awards or go viral by social media, but it might have. But for those 75 kids, it's now an important part of an experience of living and growing in Kitchener, helping them feel like they belong here. Sometimes it's the little things that make a lasting impact on their lives. Even more importantly, the mural began a great conversation. It was a fabulous day to engage parents, kids, and other people that live in our community, and talk about the great programming that can happen within our small community. Simple tangible projects like painting a mural are a fantastic way to get people connecting with each other and talking about the future of our neighborhood. I'm especially excited about the Do It Yourself Project, action item number one, the Neighborhood Places Program. We heard the community ask for simple, easy steps for anyone to make simple changes to their neighborhood. These guides will really help tool for people who want to make positive change in their neighborhood. I'm a big fan of community gardens. They're so good for neighborhoods because they build community between neighbors, foster food awareness, and empower people to do something good for themselves. In Williamsburg, our community garden is going to move for a much bigger project, and these tools that are being created will help simplify the relocation process. The sooner we get the paperwork in and approval process better, so we can quickly get back to growing vegetables and building community. Let me close by repeating that some of the expectations of the project team you heard two weeks ago. We do not expect this strategy to sit on the shelf. We do not expect the strategy to sit on the shelf. We believe we can create a strategy that is achievable, 18 action items, is absolutely doable, and we expect every single one of them to implement it. As each act is completed, I'm excited to see residents take advantage of the tools and resources available to them and shape their neighborhood to make it their own. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Is there any questions of Frank? If not, just once again, want to thank you, and I know a number of the members. In fact, I'm going to ask the members that have been involved in the Neighborhood Strategy to just stand up. I know there's a number of them in the room, so we can just acknowledge you here as well. Thank you. And so with that, I'll turn it over to councillor Ionidas to bring the recommendation forward. Go ahead. Didn't click in, sorry. Try again. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Marsh that item number 10, the Neighborhood Strategy, Love My Hood, Kitchener Guide to Great Neighborhoods, be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Gazola.
When you vote, as you did last week, I want you to break. There are five paragraphs in 10. I want you to break the first two, take those as a group, and the last three as another group.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that.
And you really should have a recorded vote, because it is.
Yeah, a recorded vote is requested by councillor Galloway-Sealock. I do just want to, since this is the public council meeting, add a few final comments of thanks to our staff team that led this initiative, to the community volunteers, who have been such an important part of it. As I said downstairs, I've long believed in the power of neighbors connecting with one another and working together to build an inclusive community where everyone belongs. When we feel like we belong, we're happier and healthier physically, mentally, and emotionally, and we are more likely to ask others to help in a time of need and to lend our hand to them in return. Here in Kitchener, we're absolutely committed to becoming a welcoming city to people from all over the world, knowing that our strengths come from our collective diversity. As newcomers move into our neighborhoods, whether they're new Canadians from Syria, tech workers from Silicon Valley, or a family from nearby Ontario town, we need to be intentional in helping them feel like they belong. Many communities focus on the infrastructure and other issues that are important to a community. Not every community focuses on the social infrastructure, as we have, through the work that's been done in developing this neighborhood strategy. And so I think this is an important document that's truly going to help us guide our community in this important area for years to come. So with that, a recorded vote has been called. We will deal with the first two paragraphs. First... And that's carried unanimously. And I will deal with the next three. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is carried. Thank you, everybody. And of course, you're welcome to stay for the balance of the council meeting if you're so inclined. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's item B. I understand Mr. Dylan Langen is not able to be here, but Paul Langen is here. Welcome, Mr. Langen.
Welcome, Mayor. Thanks, council. Yes, Dylan Langen is my son.
Your son, okay.
He is actually an artistic director, but he's actually a vocal coach, too, and he's preparing some students for their auditions for Lurier. So that's kind of a priority for him, to get the kids ready. In 2015, Dylan started up an opera company in the Waterloo region, so we're already into our second, third year now. And it's modern, affordable, and accessible. Some of the things with opera in the future, in the past, I should say, is it really wasn't open to the general public and to the modern era. They try to do things different, so for instance, their dialogue is in English. So secondly, the singing is in French or Italian, or whatever the language of the opera is. They make sure the opera performance is less than an hour and a half, so people can stay with it. It's very interactive with the public. You see the handout there that I've given you. The top couple pictures are in Cambridge, the bottom ones are at the beautiful Kitchener Library Theater, but they literally go right into the audience to get the audience engaged in the opera. And I think because of these reasons, and the fact that most of them are graduates from Lurier, and they're young people, that they're doing quite well. And I know in the past, in the Waterloo region and in Kitchener, opera hasn't done well, but I think with this new youthful approach, it's been successful. Cambridge there, the room sells out. But I wanted to let you know that we are coming to Kitchener. We have a great relationship with the Kitchener Library, and I assure you people know, but we want more people in the city of Kitchener know about that beautiful theater that's been built in the basement there. We feel it's been underutilized. We have an agreement now with the library there that we're coming there with our opera. We provide it free of charge to the public, and then to get more people into that room. So it's a mutual benefit for us. We get a room at no cost, and they get free entertainment. So we're coming here for the third time on March 23rd to the Kitchener Library to do our dress rehearsal for Don Giovanni, an opera there. So we're really looking forward to it, and the point of this is to let you to pass the word to everybody. Opera's alive in Kitchener, it's affordable in Kitchener, it's accessible, and it's modern. And feel free to answer any questions you have about it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Langen. We do have some questions. Councillor Etherington.
Mr. Langen, yeah, I welcome opera to Kitchener. Could you, when you go into the audience and grab people, do they have to sing?
No, we don't actually grab them, but we'll sing amongst them, as opposed to... They do have an Opera on the Go program where we go into a theater, we go into a restaurant, and then we do get the tables interactive, but in a concert setting like the Kitchener Library, we'll just leave the stage and just get more in touch with the audience, is the idea.
What is the name of the woman who dies in Don Giovanni?
Dylan's not here.
Okay.
I'm just responsible with Jordan, our treasurer, to keep it above ground, which is a significant thing.
I'm worried, because I was with my wife at an opera in Venice, and she died in my wife's lap. They came into the audience. Thank you.
Well, I can't guarantee it in Kitchener. That picture in the middle on the right-hand side is my son singing in Italy there. I guess I was just bragging. Okay, sorry, next question.
It's good to brag every once in a while. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you for your presentation. So did you mention where are you putting on the show after the dress rehearsal happens for free at the library?
Well, it's actually a full performance on March 23rd in the library basement at the beautiful theater. We do replicate it again in Cambridge the next night, but they pay. That's the difference, but it's the exact same show.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem at all.
Those are all the questions we have. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
And best wishes.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is Mr. Paul Britton with respect to clause one of the Finance and Corporate Services Report. Mr. Britton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I have, we made a fulsome presentation at committee, and we're here simply in support of committee's recommendation with respect to this Drivver Road credit refund agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, and there don't appear to be any questions, so thank you very much. And councillor Davey, you're bringing that one in?
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dave Schneider that item one of Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, thank you. We have some comments. Councillor Fernandez.
No comments, just a request for a recorded vote, please.
Okay, we'll do that. Councillor Gazola.
I have a question, and I'm not sure if it was raised last... I don't have a problem with what we're doing, but councillor Fernandez last week was concerned about the width of the road, and looking, discussing the matter, I understand that if it's a two-lane road, we don't get into the problems that she was concerned about. Has that question been dealt with? If so, what was it?
I believe the road issue has been dealt with, but maybe, is that, Mr. Redman, is that your department? Go ahead.
Through the chair. So I'd have to follow up specifically on that, but I believe staff answered the question at committee a couple of weeks ago.
What could you humor me and answer for me again, because I must not have... The reason I'm wondering is, is it possible to go with a two-lane road now and a four-lane road when it's needed?
Through the chair, I don't have the details for that, so I would have to get back to you on that specific answer.
Okay.
I gather everyone's happy that that was dealt with, satisfied that...
Yeah. Councillor Galloway-Sealock, you have some information?
Well, just from my knowledge and following the project, because half of it's in the ward I represent, a traffic analysis has been done, and it was done extensively through the Dune OMP appeals, that the traffic volumes, and that it needed to be a four-lane road and the design detail, has been done and worked with on the residents on the Ward 5 side to make sure that the width and the sound barrier and all the details have been worked out. That's my understanding.
Okay. The reason I asked a question again is that our resident environmentalist councillor Fernandez was concerned about it, not concerned about what we're doing and the process with the development charges, but it was a matter of the road being so wide.
Okay, thank you, councillor Gazola. Councillor Fernandez.
This is, I mean, I'm going to try and answer a little bit of councillor Gazola's question. This has always been a concern for me, and I have expressed it to staff many, many, many years ago, because I felt that this is a road that, if they're talking about moving people from the southwest-ish area, at the time, there was a countryside line. That has been moved through mediation at the Ontario Municipal Board, but the northern section, the transportation studies that were done, were done significantly many, many years ago, and that's why I continue to challenge that. I essentially did not make any headway or change with staff's recommendation, and I mean, it was a discussion I had with councillor Gazola last week, so he said he was going to raise the question. I recognize that Mr. Redman was not part of all of that process, and so it would be hard for you to answer that. I think essentially, it would be people like Mr. Gross would be able to answer if there was an opportunity to only go with two lanes, if that would still be up for discussion. So I just leave it to staff to sort of say whether that's still an option, or is it a fait accompli, at least with the north portion, because that's what we're only talking about, the north portion at this time.
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor. So Mr. Gross has emailed me, so he's indicated that the design is complete and approved by traffic at four lanes.
Thank you. Okay, so a recorded vote has been requested. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Our next delegation is Nancy Murray with respect to traffic calming on Yellow Birch, and that's clause five of Community Infrastructure Committee's report. Ms. Murray, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I don't actually understand how I became an actual delegate, but the only reason I'm here, as the owner of 203 Yellow Birch, all I want to hear is the calming bumps are gone, and I will be very one-happy homeowner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There don't appear to be any questions. Now I can ask councillor Ionidas to bring item number five forward, please. Councillor Ionidas.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by councillor Marsh that item number five, that the two-speed cushions on Hyvee Drive in between Driftwood Drive and Iron Needles Boulevard B maintain permanently, and that the, that dinner, let's see, that the two-speed cushions on Yellow Birch Drive between Driftwood Drive and Iron Needles Boulevard B removed. And that's about the essence of it, basically.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gazola, comments?
Not really a comment. I just, I would like staff, when we dealt with this last week, we saw the changes that have occurred as a result of putting traffic calming in that area. And the results of traffic calming had very positive results with, in cases where there, if I remember correctly, it was sometime between 20 and 25 percent reduction in speeds and also in accidents. So I just wanted to make that point, that in this case, this is fine what they're doing, but that traffic calming does do what we, what it's intended to do. I know nobody likes it. I don't like it, have to slow down, but it does do what it's intended to do, and this was a good example on that particular report that we had last week.
Thank you for those comments. So it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Okay, so it has been approved. Thank you. We'll now move on to item number E, and it's a zone change listed as clause two of Planning and Infrastructure Services Committee. We have two registered delegations, Candice McCucci and Mel Shaughnessy-Dobb, and one add-on today, Victor La Bresch. I can remind all the delegations to focus on new information today that wasn't shared at committee. And so, Ms. McCucci, you're our first delegation.
Thank you. I'm just here to provide some clarification and answer some questions that were raised two weeks ago. We have, first of all, we have amended the renderings to illustrate the new building colors and logos. Second, we addressed the idea of creating the gas station with a car wash on the existing site, which is currently permitted under the zoning. And third, the request by councillor Singh to address the noise concerns and the explanation of the noise buffering fences. As you can see, this is just the updated revision with the darker colors on the building. It's a change that is going through A&amp;W's now. This is the proposed site plan as is, and what we've done is taken the same site and added the car wash, which is still 30 meters away from the site, and the full gas station, which would be allowed. So as you can see, we can still do the existing concept of having the drive-through car wash, the detailing centers, the small store, and the pumps. As discussed before, a noise study was completed, and there was no mitigation factors required, but we did look into the fence as what the neighbors wanted, and we're taking that into concern. So to explain that, I guess, a little further. So the only difference in noise between the proposed A&amp;W and the car wash, they're very similar, but the car wash would have, obviously, the detailing stations and the 24-hour light and the sound of the car wash itself, where A&amp;W would have the speaker boards. The existing noise that is being discussed is basically dominated by the road traffic and human activity. I'm sure council has well-familiar with the site and the existing sounds. Currently, when you look around, there is no noise barriers in place in that area, and we had given the fence before. So a noise barrier, as confirmed by HGC Engineering, is anything that meets 20 kilograms per square meter. That's roughly about a two-inch thickness in a pressure-treated wood board. The solid wood barrier fence that doesn't meet that would still buffer some noise, but it wouldn't be considered what you would call a noise barrier that would be classified within a noise study. So acoustically, as long as a noise barrier fence meets that surface density, there's little difference between wood, AIL noise fencing, concrete, or anything like that. It just has to be that 20 kilograms per square meter. This is the fence we had suggested before in an eight-foot high. It isn't the two inches wide, but very similar to that is what we would call a noise barrier fence. This is what is used in the city of Mississauga. It does meet the 20 kilograms, sorry, per square meter, and it would buffer noise and be considered an actual noise barrier fence. If there's any questions or concerns about that?
There are. Councillor Singh.
Yes, I do have a few. Candice, thanks for amending the rendering, so for us to see what the changes would be. Now you're saying the actual noise barrier wall wasn't required because of the ongoing noise that already is in place at that intersection?
The noise that is being produced by the restaurant and the distance between doesn't require a noise barrier fence. They said there is existing noises from the intersection, we all know that, that there's existing traffic noises. With the proposal of the eight-foot-high fence, it would buffer out the existing noises, as well as noises from... well as noises from the restaurant, but it's not a requirement to meet the noise level standards that would be considered a bother or have a negative impact on the neighbors.
So you guys did do the test, the noise test, just to see what kind of noise is...
A full noise study was done.
All right. And right now, the noise that permeates from the intersection is extensive to begin with, or was that taken in?
Then, we can't address the existing noise. I mean, the intersection was there.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying it's, it's hard to differentiate because of the existing noise that's quite heavy from the traffic right now.
There is definitely existing noise there, and the proposal of the fence will assist in helping not only any concerns from their restaurant, but it will assist the neighbors in improving their quality.
Sure, which would be a good addition, so, and I think I was trying to refer to the traffic, because I think it'll help to make a point later on, that there, it is a traffic-heavy intersection. Now, my request on the last meeting, to add provisions to the existing wall to improve the, or, you know, lower the decibel, so what were those measures? Have they been incorporated, or do you have recommendations on that?
Yes, so that would be a noise barrier fence. As you can see from here, this would be what would be actually proposed. It is the detailed drawing of it. It is a fence that was suggested by the noise company.
Was that the same fence that was shown to us?
It's similar, but it has the boards to be the two-inch thickness, which will give the 20 kilograms per square meter.
Excellent, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
There don't appear to be any other questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next delegation then is Mel Shaughnessy-Dobb.
I brought water this time. Good evening, thank you for hearing me. I'm going to try to go through this nice and quick again. These are my speaking notes, so I've just given you a copy of it, because I get quite nervous. So what I'm asking for is, I've contacted several councilors over the past two weeks. When I left here, I was the first to speak, so I was not given an opportunity to kind of think over and hear, say some of the things that I saw. I think one of the biggest things that I saw was that there was no transportation studies that were asked for. I know that it was a really reluctant vote. I felt like you guys were, it could have gone either way. And so when I realized that there hadn't been any traffic studies, I decided I would dig back in again, and I would look at that file, and I would see how they came to that decision. So I contacted the city, and I contacted the region, both of the transportation companies. My, was a really simple question that I had for them, is how did you come up with not needing a traffic study? Completely different answers, by the way. One was the city department, I spoke with Dave Sellar, and he told me that the criteria was ANW has a peak, peak time of 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That was the end of the answer. There was no other peak times, there was no dinner peak times, so there was nothing in that that was actually going to affect traffic, so no traffic study needed. Talked with the region, his name was Jason Wigglesworth. He said that the only thing that triggers a traffic study with them is they look at the model of the old business, and then they look at what the new one is. So a gas bar is going to have a higher volume than an ANW here. Didn't hit the 100, so there was no traffic study required. I'm going to move on to point number three. Do you remember when I brought up that there was 82 collisions in the 2014 annual regional, annual report? So there was 82 accidents in 2014 on that intersection with three fatalities. Soon as I left here that night, it got me thinking. The, up there and on your maps that you can see, that intersection is a regional road with a big city road. 60 meters down from that is my driveway. Right across from that is the Tim Hortons, the Petro-Canada, and the 80 townhouses. So when I called up Mr. Mike Jones, he's one of the senior advisors at the region for transportation, and I just asked him, the 82 collisions and the three fatalities, does that include those accidents? And the answer was no. So he said even if a police officer gets to scene, he may code it as an intersection accident, but it's not. It normally gets re, every single accident is re-looked at, it gets then recoded, and they're going to be called mid-blocks. I spoke with Mr. Cronkite, I can't remember his name, Barry Cronkite. He was going to give me the numbers, he was actually going to calculate. I talked with him at the end of last week, I haven't heard back from him. He was going to give me the number of accidents that are down there. He said, Mel, the numbers, you're probably going to think that the numbers are higher, but he says a lot of people are just going to get out of their cars, swear at each other, and keep going, because there's just not enough damage to report it. So you've got the regionals' numbers that are already very high, and I just want to make sure you understand that that gas station was not open in 2014 when that statistic was there. So it was not functioning. So you've already got 82 collisions with three fatalities, and none of those mid-blocks, and I don't have numbers to give you, but I implore you guys to find them out. So the region's approach to fixing this problem, their due diligence was to say to them, I would really like you to put a median in here, no left-hand turns, this bus station is a problem, let's pull it back. The region did their due diligence. I don't believe that the city did their due diligence when you turn. If you're looking at that map, you've got three lanes. The westward traffic has to, now it cannot turn into that business, it has to take a left onto the city road, and within 35, I'm going to guess here, I did a measuring on a, on an app, 35 to 40 meters down, even if they pull that as far as they can, okay, and they're going to have to turn left, they can turn left and right in there. But there's the Petro-Canada, and the Timmies, and that bus stop, I've highlighted in green there, 25 meters. It's a single lane, 80 townhomes, all of our residents, everything happens right there. And again, that gas station was not open for those statistics. Number four, on the regionals' email that they sent back, it said that there's going to be a ma- a major reconstruction done in 2020, so that's two and a half years. What I'm hoping that you guys can do, that the region and the city transportation services didn't do, is come back up where you're looking at this map, like we are right now. You can see that that probably shouldn't be a single lane with 30,000 cars traveling through it. This is not the applicant's fault at all. However, this is, it's just asking for trouble. It's a 40-year-old intersection, the official plan, I thought that I'd missed something back in 2014 when that official plan got approved. I'm like, crap, what was I doing? I wasn't looking at the papers. Turns out, it's actually a 40-years-old. That official plan made that a college, college commercial. So it wasn't like I missed anything to, to be here. The OMB appeal. So I know that the big thing last time that we met was, the applicant will appeal to the OMB. Yes, he might. Yes, we might. I don't think, at the end of the day, that kind of a threat can be used against council. If it's something that is our values, and something that we're looking at, that we really can see a bigger picture, if you, I mean, the OMB is meant to do mediation. So the biggest point I think I can make here tonight is number six, can versus should. I believe that your city planners have put together a plan that can work there. And when I say can, I mean they've taken the guidelines, and they've kind of mushed them up a little bit, only the guidelines, I don't think they've broken any laws. I think they've made it work on the tiniest little site. And then I believe that it's up to council to say should. So I'm a persistent girl. I contacted the OMB last week, not just in a frivolous way, I contacted the, the citizen liaison person. I just wanted somebody who would speak to me in layman's terms, and I wanted to see if I could find, in a very short period of time, a case that said, here's something that we can do. And then OMB supported a council to say, but council doesn't think you should. Just because a developer asks, doesn't necessarily mean they should. I'm not even really going to get into number seven, because it's an OMB case that's open right now between Strasburg, at Strasburg and Huron, which is a couple blocks down from me. They're not college campus, it's some other zone, and I do know that in there, I read that it has something to do with, ANW is the appellant, and it does have to do with a drive-through, and it's a whole bunch of people who have now, I think it's, they're trying to challenge the official plan to, to, to change that. However, my mouth just about dropped open when I found out that ANW is fighting for an additional one, three blocks down from me, on something that's not even rated as highly as the college commercial. So I guess in closing, I am hoping that there is a motion put forward tonight for a traffic study. When I did speak with the region and the city, they both assured me, Mel, if you get a traffic study done, all it's going to show you is flow. I think I heard back from Scott Davies as well this week, and what he spoke to was about flow and volume. That's not what I'm asking for. We already know there's 30,000 cars going through there. I want you to ask for the traffic study, keeping in mind all of the collisions, and all the collisions tonight I can't tell you about, because I don't have the numbers from Mr. Cronkite, or any of the other mid-block information. So somebody just to look at that map, and see what's about to happen when that median gets built, and where you're about to take all that westbound traffic, and that's to my house, and another 80 homes right across the street from us. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. We have a number of members of council with questions for you. Councilor Singh? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Mel, for appearing again as a delegation. In many cases, we see residents where there's a change proposed in their neighborhood, and they're just, right off the bat, opposed to it, just because they don't want change happening in their neighborhood. But what I've seen from the last meeting, and of course, the information you've put forward, you're not resistant to change, you just want to ensure that the right things are in place in your neighborhood to ensure protection of safety and the right land usage, what's being proposed on that corner lot. Now, I will be recommending or encouraging members of council to support a, a traffic impact report. I think that's something that is necessary on this one. Now, you, you mentioned that, you know, a typical traffic review study will just mention the flow. You alluded to this, maybe you can shed some more of a personal perspective, because you live there. So Strasburg, turning in from Ottawa Street, is a single lane going down, and the other side, and you can't really see it, is a single lane and then advanced, turning left. Is that correct?
Sorry, if you're coming out of the driveway that we're, that I've circled here...
No, if you're, if you're making a left turn, so say, following the arrows that you have, I'm following those arrows?
Yes, okay, from the three lanes with the left-hand turning lane.
Following those arrows, if you're turning left onto Strasburg Road, you're turning left onto a single-lane roadway.
Single lane with a bus stop within 25 meters.
And the adjacent traffic flowing the opposite way, it's a single lane coming and one advanced turning lane.
Right, they have a turning lane with a bike lane next to it.
Right. Now, do you see traffic backing up already as it is, because of the gas station and the, the Tim Hortons that's opposite to the proposed?
I didn't want to bring a bunch of more huge package for you this week, because it was just for whatever, but I've got pictures that go all the way back down, at least a good eight, 10 houses, and that's on coming up Strasburg and coming down. Coming the other way, I see them all the time where they're trying to get through the corner, but there's a bus stop there, and so they're stopped, or they're waiting. And the bu- the children's school bus stops right in front of that first townhouse, so it depends, if you get a city bus that stopped there, and a school bus with their little stop sign out, nobody's, but I mean, that's going to happen on any road once a little...
So if I continue following what's on the, on the screen right now, because you've marked it really well, for reference point, if you follow the arrows, if a vehicle is traveling that path, if you wanted to go to Tim Hortons, or the gas bar, or the, the car wash there, on Ottawa Street, when you pass that intersection, that's a concrete barrier, right? So it's, it's difficult for them to, to get access to Tim Hortons, or the gas bar. They would most likely turn left and go from that side off of Strasburg, correct? So there's already traffic that, that backs up the traffic that goes on to that side.
They're, they're either going to take a left onto Strasburg, or they've got to go all the way down to the McLennan Park, where the BMO, where the BMO entrance is, is that mall.
Okay. Now, apart from, you know, the perspective of you living in the neighborhood, the proponer has already provided council with a traffic review opinion, which doesn't go necessarily, I think, specific to this intersection, but it speaks of generalities of a gas bar, traffic going to a gas bar, as opposed to an ANW. And their determination is that traffic will be about 35 percent less, as opposed to if this council were to say no, no to this application, and the applicant were to then just develop a gas bar with a, with a drive-through car wash. Do you want to make comment to that, or?
I will make comment that, so 2014, the, it was so struggling that they closed down the gas pumps, and they just ran the garage. I don't know the exact year that the other big Petro-Canada came in across the street, but it wiped them out. So it's many years before that, that this was never, it wasn't a very, a very functioning gas station. So ag gas station, and I've done the research and the numbers and the flow and whatnot, and I know there's a big difference between what a gas station, a regular gas station like across the street would bring in, as opposed to an ANW. However, my comment would be here, looking specifically at what's there and how many years ago it was. It's, it's too hard to, to put numbers onto that. It was never a viable business for at least the last 10 years.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and thank you again for all the information that you've tried to put forward to make your rationale as valid as possible. Mr. Mayor, I would have some questions of staff, when appropriate time.
Okay, some additional questions of this delegation, and then more delegations. Councilor Anetsky?
Yeah, thank you for coming in and making another presentation with some revisions that you've pointed out. Based on the request for a traffic study, you did indicate that, from the statistics that has been provided by staff, both city and region, that there's 29,000, 30,000 cars going through that intersection on a daily basis. And of course, there was a number of collisions that you pointed out from the statistics. But your concern, as I would gather, would be not the intersection itself, but between the intersection and the townhouse.
Where I've got the circle, yes.
Because you've got the townhouse entrance, you've got the, the, the commercial development, which is the Petro-Canada and Tim Hortons on, on the top side of that picture, and then of course, there's your property and all the other properties along the south side, and then of course, this proposed ANW. And of course, the way the road systems are right now, there's, there's the issue of traffic. Is that the issue that you want the terms, that traffic study to be done? Is, is on that particular portion of the street, the 100 meters roughly?
Yes, it would, if there's any study that's going to be done, it needs to encompass where their driveways are, and both of their driveways. They've always been too short, that there's nothing that you can do about it, as they brought up last time. You can't land-lock anything, so they are going to make provisions to push them as far as they can. But if you look at how many meters each one of them are, it's not just an applicant problem, this is an actual city block problem.
On that, on that basis, then, you know, I met with you last week, late last week, and I did travel the suggested route that you've got showing here. When I got to that left-turning lane, I happened to be the 12th car, or something like that, and eventually, when I got to the intersection, and lights turned red, so I had to wait, I happened to be the first car. And so when I got the advanced green, I made the left, and went down Strasburg Road to come to your place, to see how this would all maneuver, and I stopped by your place, and I could not make a left turn, because there was at least a dozen cars queued all the way out from the intersection, back down towards block line. But because I stopped there, I looked in my rearview mirror, and waiting to see when the light would turn green, so all the other cars could advance, so I could make the left. And I couldn't, because I had to wait 45 seconds or so, but as I waited, I also noticed all the cars that were turning left behind me were all queued up back into the intersection. And it must have been, I said, a dozen cars. I couldn't see them all, because that's when they all curved. So I see this as the problem that you're outlining, as the issue, as opposed to the intersection. Is this what you experience all the time yourself?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where the traffic study, I think, that Councilor Singh is talking about, it should be addressing, as opposed to internally of the, of the site, because the site seems to be okay, according to staff. The other question I have for you is, based on your discussions and comments last time, you want a traffic study. The traffic study will address the flow of traffic, and maybe make some recommendations as to whether that lane, it's a single lane, because that's what I was blocking, and nobody could get by me, and of course, that's where the bus stop is as well, so, and it just didn't happen to be a bus there at the time. But that causes the problem for turns, and that would be just a congestion right there. So if this study goes through, unless the council supports it, and it gets adopted, this would now then be included as part of the zone change application. But I got the impression from you two weeks ago, that you were against the zone change, and did not want the ANW restaurant operation. Is that correct?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that this traffic study with a collision report will convince you that where you were... where you were vacillating two weeks ago, that you might then reconsider taking restaurant off the list and prohibit it.
But that traffic study may not do that. They may provide recommendation of widening the lanes or something of that nature and still adopt, solve the problem and make the application go forward. Is that your satisfaction?
Not a 24-hour drive-through, no. I didn't want to bring up old business, so I'm not going to get into that. That's why I've chosen something that is still a big issue that wasn't tackled in the last one. Everything else that was brought up seemed to have been either completely gone by the wayside or things like emissions don't exist. So I feel that this is the very last of the, and the most serious that we've got. However, it cannot just be a flow traffic study that you're looking at. It has to encompass how many collisions are actually happening.
So taking all that into consideration, really, there's a real mixed bag of issues here. You really don't want the zone change approved, is that correct?
No.
But you'd want the zone change approved with all the other uses because-
Yes.
...the C7 zone only allows car wash and gas bar, and they're already across the street, so this property ends up being sterilized, can't do anything with it. So if you rezone it to R8, you allow, I think it was another 35 uses that was permitted under there, you'd be happy with that?
At the end of the meeting, I was up there listening, and he was just talking about we either let the zone change go through or we let them have a drive-through gas bar with a drive-through car wash. And I'm thinking up there going, "We're not trying to stop the zone change, we're just trying to take out either drive-through or restaurant." We were not trying at any point to say, "You can only build these two things." We're trying to be as absolutely fair as well as still live there.
So fair being any of those other uses would be acceptable?
Way past your time.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you, Mel, for coming in and for reaching out and all the research that you've done. It's pretty impressive, all your work. Mel, I'm glad you brought that up about the discussion last time. It did end up, one of the biggest points for me was the fact that if we didn't approve the zone change, that the property as it stands could have a 24-hour drive-through at a gas station without any council direction whatsoever required. It's not that, you know, you as a resident, that you're saying, "Well, no, go ahead and allow the zone change, but don't allow them to do this." I appreciate your perspective, but I'm trying to understand, would you be... The thing is, we can't dictate what happens at that lot unless it has to do with a zone change. We're not at liberty to go ahead and say, "Well, you guys are going to just only do this and this, but not that from this zone."
But I think they do. There was the list of things that the city planners took out, and there was a list of things that they had added in. So that would just be going along with that. It would be taking one of the provisions out.
I can only ask you a question. So really, my question is, if we did not allow the zone change, would you be all right with a 24-hour drive-through at a gas station if that ended up being what happened?
I could only do what I can do. So I'm trying to let you know how I feel. That's why I'm very passionately here.
So the answer is no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh is later on. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I just want to go over that. Your major objection is to the drive-through. Could you live with a restaurant if there was no drive-through?
Yes, if I had to, yes.
But the worst scenario for you is the drive-through.
The 24-hour drive-through, yes.
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I just want to start by saying I really do appreciate your passion and the work that you put into this. It's a lot of work, and I've seen what you've put into it. My only question is, supposing something happens, whether it's council outright turning it down, et cetera. A question specifically for you. If we turn this down and the applicant does go to the Ontario Municipal Board, right now, the applicant's working with us and doing some things they wouldn't be required to do, most notably this fence and noise wall. Are you comfortable taking that risk that if it does go to the OMB that there may not be required? There's no required fence whatsoever in terms of the noise. Is that something that you're prepared to risk?
Yes, there's other neighbors that have been, they've been quite concerned about the fence. I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks, Mel. And when you're talking about a transportation traffic study, you've got the circle around the orange area, which would dictate it being only a city traffic study. Did the region in any way, shape, or form suggest that there should be something studied around the intersection with the left-turn lane?
The region talks about the region's roads. They don't make any kind of, they don't overreach. They were extremely nice to work with. They were just really nice for answers. They did point out that the major reconstruction is coming in two and a half years. I don't know if that could be sped up. But yeah, it's a very different, it's talking to two completely separate, different entities. And I really wish I had the numbers for you because I think that it would, I think it would be quite eye-opening. I look out my window, and I know it's eye-opening. I just really wish I could have given you those numbers for the mid-blocks.
Right, and I think that it's, when you're talking about a redevelopment of that intersection, I would look to staff after you've departed, if they can explain what the redevelopment of that intersection is going to be looking like and where that change may affect all the businesses that are going to be there. I think that's the only question I had, except to make a comment that I myself, in our discussions, it popped into my mind that I had had not that long ago, actually 2014, I was rear-ended just a little bit past where that median ends. So I know exactly what you're talking about, when the traffic is coming around, making a left-hand turn, and somebody was distracted and they rear-ended me. So that collision was not reported to the police because we just ironed it out between the two of us. And that's what you're saying is happening quite often.
There's three issues, yes. There's the regional statistics, whatever the number for the mid-blocks is, and then they get out of the car, swear at each other, and then keep going. Those all do, it's all in the exact same place, and 16 meters is not. I don't think it's asking too much to look at the same thing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for coming in again and your passion for this.
Okay, those are the questions we have for you. Thank you. Counselor Singh, did you want to wait until the last delegation to ask staff questions? Okay. So our next delegation then is Victor Labresh. Welcome, Victor.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic, members of council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Victor Labresh, the firm of Labresh Patterson and Associates, 330 Trillium Jaw Drive here in Kitchener. As you're aware, we did make presentation comments to a planning committee on the 13th of this month. We understand that since that time, new requests and new information has come forward by a neighbor regarding traffic concerns related to the subject application and proposal. I was surprised and perplexed to hear this relative to traffic, given the context of the area as we outlined at the committee. The city's official plan, and I think we really need to reiterate the obligations, the planning obligations for this area set by the city that is being met by our client, and what under the Act, the Planning Act, can be reasonably requested under the circumstances. The city's official plan designates the subject property to the northeast and west of the property as what's called planned commercial campus. In other words, this is the area planned for big-box retailers. There are three other similar designations for big-box retail, if you will, Sports World, Sunrise, and the Boardwalk. The official plan specifically states, specifically, that the planned commercial campus area are primarily auto-oriented. Further, the plan states that the planned commercial campus are large concentrations of commercial entertainment uses. Planned commercial campuses have a citywide or regional orientation and are located near or adjacent provincial highways. This is the highest traffic designation allowed in this city and in the region, and I would emphasize that. As previously noted at committee, Ottawa Street is designated a regional road, primary arterial road. Also, Strasburg has got the similar designation of an arterial road. It's also described as being, Strasburg to carry large volumes of traffic between arterial and major collector roads throughout the municipality. Just based on the official plan, land use and abutting road designation alone, a traffic study being required won't change any of the existing permitted context or traffic volumes for this area. As previously stated at committee, this is, we've looked at the use compared to what's allowed, and as we stated then, and it's now been reconfirmed by WSP Engineering, that there is less traffic by at least 600 vehicles per day for the proposed land use. If I may ask the clerk just to place that on the screen of the... So the findings of the study states that on a typical weekday, the proposed A and W restaurant will generate 24% and fewer than 53% trips less in the AM and PM hours compared to a gas bar and convenience store car wash. On a daily basis, the A and W restaurant will generate 600 fewer trips or equivalent to actually 36% rather than 30. On a Saturday and weekend, it's 40% less trips for the proposed use. The trigger for a traffic study, and city staff may speak to this, indicates that new traffic would be approximately, for this use, 49 trips in the AM and 36 in the PM. These trips are far fewer than the 100 trips, so it's less than half, which is used fairly for all applicants to trigger a drive-through, sorry, a traffic study in this case in any municipality in Ontario and certainly in Kitchener. Furthermore, the site-generated new trips would contribute only 1% to 2% more traffic to the abutting roads at any given time. The applicant has indicated that the access to the property needs to be properly regarded. I think it's also important to note that the primary and arterial road designation talks about carrying the largest volumes of traffic in any municipality. In closing, I'd like to submit that the documents that we've provided indicate that the site plan and the proposed use will have less traffic, less noise, and less environmental impact to the surrounding neighbors compared to what the previous and further as-of-right uses would be permitted today. The complete development will improve the overall compatibility and lessen the impacts of the existing built context to the abutting neighbors. And that has been stated in studies done in support of this. If there's further discussion about a study for Strasburg, I think we need to seriously talk about the city's obligation, respectfully, to do that study. Because the property comes with the taxes and the designation, the zoning as-of-right, and if the applicant, or, sorry, the neighbor is suggesting that the Strasburg is failing, which I think is what she seems to suggest, that's not the applicant's obligation, and the city needs to look at that situation and remedy that if that is in fact the case. To put the study on the applicant would be, in this case, would be unprecedented. We've done applications in Toronto area that have 40,000 to 60,000 cars a day for similar uses, and traffic study has not been requested of us. Thank you.
Do you have some questions? Counselor Singh, yours are still for staff only? Do you have a que... Okay, go ahead then.
If you can just keep me in the same order when asking questions of staff. Thank you, Mr. Labresh. I understand the points that you're making, but based on the subject lands right now, what is the parcel size of the...
It is approximately 0.72 of an acre.
Is it typical, do you see, obviously with your expertise, of lands of that size to be on C8?
To you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, yes. I mean, I think you have examples of parcel sizes in other planned commercial, big-box retail area that are of similar size.
Of this small size?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you made point to the traffic impact in saying that with the information that you guys have, that you would have, in fact, a reduction in traffic. So that assessment is in generality, but when we reference this parcel of land, is it correct that there are limitations to the way it's situated as controlled entry or entry access? There's, I think, only right-in, right-out from Ottawa Street, and it's only expanded access off of Strasburg. Is that not correct?
That is correct, but that is very typical restrictions that are put on to sites when they're redeveloped in, on arterial, major arterial roads like this is, so it's not untypical.
Those do cause complexities of operation, do they not?
Not for the actual safety in and out of the property.
I'm talking about-
It may cause backup on the road.
Fair enough.
Which is a fact of urban life, and...
Okay, well, you confirmed that fact afterwards anyway, saying because of the backing of the traffic. I made that point only because you saying that the limitations of the traffic or the impact is to do with the way the, I guess, the traffic's managed on Strasburg, so it should be the city Kitchener's responsibility to do that assessment or review and not the applicant. And my rebuttal to you was, I think there are certain additional limiting factors to this parcel as the way it's situated and the access point off of Ottawa Street, but regardless.
I would respectfully disagree. I think the obligations are already set by the designation of this area of both land use and the designation of these roads.
I don't blame you for disagreeing.
I think those obligations have been reconfirmed in judicial review.
Fair enough, thank you.
Counselor Unetsky.
Yeah, thank you for coming in once again. And this report that you circulated to us, this was prepared by a traffic consultant, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and this is through your request or your client's request?
Specifically, based on my request.
Okay, and this is basically as a result of the discussions we had two weeks ago dealing with the traffic concerns. You sort of quickly did an analysis by professionals to provide what the quick impact would be, and you've shown that it would be decreased based on the statistics, correct?
Correct.
And Counselor Singh was talking about probably bringing a motion forward to do a traffic study. Now, you also alluded in terms of your comments about the city's study, would that be something different than what this was prepared? I'm not too sure where you were going to on that.
Well, through Mayor Verbanovic, to the counselor, that was a point that I was actually going to clarify, that there's some discussion about requiring a study for traffic. I would suggest, or I would say, this is the study. There's nothing more that can be studied for this particular site, given that the act, you cannot forbid one full movement access into the site, and it's been restricted on Ottawa Street and the designation of commercial. The highest density of commercial in this region is on this property. So this is really the study. I'm not sure, there's nothing else to really prove. To the applicant's point about Strasburg is backing up more and more, and this is going to make it worse, I would beg to differ on the point of making it worse. But if it is backing up and it's a problem to her or the neighborhood, that is irrespective of this application. The city, you know, operations, engineering staff should be looking at that, as they do, I know, on a regular basis, and staff can speak to that. I'm not sure what the classification of this intersection is, because I know, you know, if it's a service level D or E, then that's considered failing, right? And we've reviewed traffic studies and recognized that, and I'm not sure if staff has that at their fingertips, what the service level is of Strasburg in this area.
Well, I don't think the issue is the intersection itself, it's just further down to make the turns. And you have a number of trips that you've got identified here, peak periods where AM and PM times, and this talks about the entire site, whether the access coming in is off of Strasburg Road or off of Ottawa Street, the right-ins, right-outs. So the other concern that the residents had was the drive-through during the night. This doesn't mention anything about that, does it? Or I missed something?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, back to Counselor Yenetski and any counselor with regards to the drive-through. I asked the question at committee last time, what is it specifically about the drive-through, whether it's 24-hour drive-through that's any different than a restaurant with a parking lot, or a car wash for that matter, self-serve or automatic? What is the difference? I hear the neighbor indicating that the biggest concern really is the drive-through, the restaurant drive-through, I just don't want that. But I haven't heard any reason as to why, because the drive-through is completely oriented on the other side of the building. She won't be able to see it or hear it respectfully, just won't, it's impossible. The intersection drowns it out. There's a new fence that's eight feet high that's going to meet the Mississauga noise standards. I don't, I don't, other than saying, "I don't want it," well, that's not acceptable. You have to say why compared to a parking lot.
Okay, and I appreciate your comments on that in terms of replying to that. You saw the experience I just relayed to counsel about me coming to the site, actually coming to her property, which is almost identical in terms of driveway access, and I just, I had to wait because of all the lineup of cars to get through. So, that's the issue that I see as being the potential problem. Sometimes you may just be able to pull in, and other times, you really cause a congestion. So, that's where I would see the traffic study coming, and I'm not sure whether this really addressed it or not. You provided some statistics which reduced the volumes, which I can appreciate that, but I don't know whether it still solves the problem along Strasburg Road itself. That's what I was just wondering, and this report doesn't quite answer that, as I would see it.
As it shouldn't, because it's an operational, road operational issue that maybe city staff can speak to. And I guess, you know, I'm concerned that we do have city staff, both at the region, professional qualified staff at the region and the city, that have not been taken at face value with the requirement for no study here. If they indicate tonight that they'll review the service level of Strasburg and come back with recommendations to consider improvements if warranted, then that's fair. That's outside of this application, because if the city is going to ask for a traffic study now on this, given the designation and the studies that have been done, it would be unprecedented and completely unfair to investors going forward in this municipality and certainly to the one here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks for the additional information. The one thing you asked, what more could be studied, what I don't see here is the collisions. And I know that when, and I realize that this is our staff report from two weeks ago, but in the traffic calming reviews, they do include collisions as part of those reviews. So, when you're just, in this study, you're just looking at the counts as opposed, you're not adding in collisions or any of that?
Correct, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fernandez, that I'm not aware, and I'm not a traffic expert per se, I'm a land use planning expert that has worked and given supplemental traffic evidence that's been accepted, that the accident reports are not specifically a trigger for a study. It's not, it's not one of those triggers that would require a study just because there's accidents occurring or maybe higher-than-average accidents occurring in a given area.
Okay. My other question to you is the land use planning picture that you showed us, is that from the official plan that's under OMB appeal right now, or is that the one that was approved a number of years ago?
That is the current official plan designation of this property that has stood since 1994, so over 20 years it's been planned commercial campus designation.
Okay, and I'll have to check with staff, but I don't believe that that designation has changed in the new OP.
I don't think it has.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Could you tell me the peak hours AM, PM of what an ANW restaurant would be and what would the peak hours for a gas station operation would be, and do they match?
I guess it would be page two or three of the report, where it has, it's table one at the top. It's, the page is positioned kind of landscape-wise, and it's table one in that, so you will see the generated trip column right to the right of that page. So, the answer for AM and PM traffic for gasoline and service station is number two. So, it's at the number two, shows that in the AM, it's 130 trips for weekday, 152 in the PM. Saturday was 214. This again is for a gas station car wash, for a total of 1,681 per day. One point, which reminds me, based on your question, Counselor, the above column, number one, notes AM peak hour at 99 for an ANW. That is actually much higher than an ANW. All that WSP could extrapolate was from the manuals. So, 99 is actually based on a Tim Hortons. The stacking study that was submitted with this application indicated that in the morning, which is, the morning drive-through is actually 25, so it's not the 99. At the end of the, we have 600 less cars for the restaurant drive-through situation, but that's based on using 99. Based on the formula, if that was really put at 25, that 600 number would be actually about 700 to 750 cars less than a gas station.
My concern is, I know we're talking AM, PM peak, but is that the same time for an ANW and a gas station?
Yes, yes, it is.
And those times, what would be the peak time in the PM for an ANW, like the time of day?
Typically, AM is 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM. Lunch is 11:30 to about 1:30. And similarly with gas, evening, 4:30 to 7:00.
I'm just concerned that the drive-through PM peak, there would be probably an 11:30 to maybe 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM as also a peak?
No, the PM peak is between 4:30 PM till about 7:00 PM is their peak. It's a two-hour window is what is considered peak times in a traffic study.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. Just wanted to quickly double-check. I think we talked about this at committee, but there was reference to the drive-through window. I just wanted to confirm that should council remove the drive-through window as an option, that would be tantamount to refusing the zone change as a whole. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify your position on this as well in terms of the noise study, or sorry, the traffic study. If I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is the existing use through this document would have a higher traffic volume than the proposed use, therefore, it's a city planning problem, not an applicant problem?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, in trying to resolve this then, the only solution, and I guess this is rhetorical, would be to remove any of even the existing use, which is not an option that we have, which puts us in a uncomfortable position, but that's more of a comment. Apologies, Mr. Mayor.
No worries. That would be all the questions we have, Mr. Labrush, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that covers our three delegations with respect to the item. Counselor Singh, you indicated you had some questions of staff?
The planning staff, the audience, so be specific to them. So, a number of points have been raised. I'll start with this at least. If council were to approve the zone change to C8 campus retail, but with restrictions, that no drive-through be allowed on the site, is that within the provision of this council to be able to do?
Go ahead.
Through you, Chair. Our current zoning policies do not distinguish between a sit-in restaurant and a drive-through. A restaurant can be sit-in, can also permit a drive-through. However, if council's direction is for us to prepare a bylaw that removes the drive-through component, staff would do that upon your request. However, as I said at committee, staff's recommendation would remain the same as in the report.
So, you're saying the way the zoning is right now, a restaurant could also be a drive-in restaurant, or have a drive-through component as well?
Yes, yes.
So, if someone were to want to have a restaurant downtown, King and Victoria, they could have a drive-through as well? Because the provision allows for, if, you know, the current zoning allowed for restaurant, they could automatically have a drive-through as well?
That is correct. If it could meet the, you know, the site function to allow the...
My understanding was that we didn't allow drive-throughs in our downtown, so I was trying to go with the same rationale, that if you could restrict it here, why can't we restrict it there? But that's new information for me, and I think a larger topic needs to be had. So, the concern, obviously, that's shared by some other committee, council members as well, and also by the resident about the traffic impact, the way Strasburg and Ottawa Street, that corner, is situated. If a traffic impact report were to be requested, what more would it require than what's being already provided by the proponent right now? What more could we ask for? Because what's being said by them is we've already provided information that speaks to the traffic at the intersection of what the impact will be of having an ANW, but the obvious blaring concerns are the lane issues, the number of collisions that have happened, and of course, the way I'm pinpointing this is the limiting factor on right in, right out off of Ottawa Street, so there's a restriction, so traffic is flowed to one corner only, and that's where the lane issues are on Strasburg. So, could a report address those concerns so that we have a comprehensive information to assess? No, there is no impact if it were to be a, you know, a drive-through, a restaurant, or a gas bar. Would it give us some more information?
Through you, Chair. I would like to defer that question to Mr. Redman if I could, as he has the expertise to answer that.
Mr. Redman.
Through the mayor. So, staff did review the need for a traffic impact study and recommended not doing one. In staff's opinion, it would provide very little additional information. One additional point that hasn't been addressed today is that this isn't really a destination-type use, it's more of a pass-by use. So, people may change their travel patterns to not do that left turn onto Strasburg Road, to do the left turn, and they may go to the ANW on their way home rather than, you know, as a destination. So, a lot of studies have indicated 50 to 80% of drive-through, this type of commercial is not destination, it's chaining it on to another trip.
You're saying someone's going to cater their day schedule to buying a burger?
Through the chair, what I'm saying is this isn't destination commercials, so people may choose to do that. This is a type of facility that people are more likely to stop at, you know, as they're going by, and if they've done this turn once and they don't feel that it's a comfortable turn, they can adapt their route to accommodate that.
Well, I regret to say I don't share with that assessment, but that's fine if that's what staff's opinion is. One last question. So, I was speaking to the traffic impact report and what's before us. In your expertise, you see countless applications like this. Do you see an impact report, like traffic report, similar to this, or does it have more information than what's being provided here? Based on what you usually see, and I'm sure planning staff do review, once a report is required, it's made, it's one of the requirements of a application. Is it typical to what's in here, or is it a little bit more comprehensive?
Through you, Chair. As part of a planning application, it is the, either the city or the regional transportation experts that request the study, and the terms of reference are created to determine what should be in the study. It is received by planning staff as part of the application, but planning staff do not review it. We don't have the expertise to review it, so it is then returned to the city or regional traffic experts for review.
Just one last thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just one last thing. When this was provided, did the proponent or their planner reach out to staff in asking what some of the requirements could have been in addressing to provide information, or this was done solely on their part without communication with staff? Was input received as to what requirements could be sought for?
Through you, Chair. My understanding, the latest traffic review that Mr. Labrush spoke to was done on their own, they did not ask us.
Okay, thank you. As I said, Mr. Mayor, I will be proposing a traffic report, and obviously, when the time is right, I will make that recommendation.
Right, so the process will be that the current recommendation will come forward, and if you want to make an amendment to it?
Yes, well, because obviously, today we're deciding what we want to do with the recommendation coming from the committee, so the way I was addressing is as a deferral, but the deferral requiring...
So, from a process point of view, the recommendation belongs to council, it's the recommendation that's coming from committee, that's what needs to be moved first? If you want to then move an alternate amendment, you can do that.
No, no, that's fine, I was just trying to let you know, what I was proposing was as a deferral as opposed to just talking about the traffic report, but I'll wait until that's moved so I can make that amendment.
That's fine. Counselor Davy.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just hopefully to save some time in comments, if I could ask Counselor Singh if his intention is that the applicant get the additional traffic study done, or if our staff look at it and come back.
Counselor Singh, can you answer that, please?
Well, the way I'm addressing this is that the impact report be satisfaction of our transportation and planning staff, so they would put those requirements. I think it's very typical that it is the applicant that prepares a report based on the requirements that are proposed by our staff. So, the process would be no different.
Okay, we'll move on with, there's a lot more questions here of staff. Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. When was the site first developed?
45 years ago. Through you, Chair, we're hearing 45 years ago from the...
45 years ago?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as a traffic study, if it's the will of this council to implement a traffic study, how much does that usually cost, give or take?
Through you, Chair. I'm uncertain of the cost, I guess it would depend on what the requirements are going to be, and if council will be putting, you know, specific requirements as part of the recommendation. Again, perhaps the applicant is a little more aware of what the cost might be.
Just quickly to answer your question, $7,000 to $10,000, and typically takes eight to 12 weeks to get that study completed.
My other question is, I guess, in regards to other sites, and do we have any other sites similar to this in the city? Because I can think of a few, but maybe you guys have a better...
Through you, Chair. Yes, just when the discussion was going on, Catherine and I did come up with a few sites that are the same size in the C8 that could permit the same use.
And are any of those sites receiving complaints about traffic?
Not that I'm specifically aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Redman, you wanted to add something, or I see you've clicked in, go ahead.
Through the mayor. So, both the City of Kitchener Transportation Staff and Region Waterloo Transportation Staff have both stated that a transportation impact study would not be needed for this application, so we would need specific direction from council on what they would be looking for in terms of traffic impact statement, because neither departments at the region or the city see the need for this study. So, I'm just providing that input for Counselor Singh if he puts forward a motion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fernandez.
Mr. Redman, when we do our traffic calming review, when I look at the metrics that were given to us last week by Mr. Carmichael, it includes things like... were given to us last week by Mr. Carmichael, it includes things like recorded speeds, speeds over, volume, and collisions, as well as length of collisions per kilometer. Would not some of those criteria be applicable to a situation like this, where you have multiple driveways, and multiple uses coming in and out of those driveways, as well as traffic coming off of a regional road?
Mr. Redman?
Through the mayor, we would look at each application, and consider all those factors. So with respect to collisions, we would look at the volume of traffic, over the number of collisions, to try to figure out, you know, is this higher than expected, or lower than expected, than other parts of the city?
So could that be a part of the request that Counselor Singh would be including in his traffic study? Because you said that regional staff and city staff have said that there is no need for a traffic study. But the traffic study that was done by WSP did not include collisions, and the impact of stacking. I guess that's another additional consideration, possibly, when we do study. I know that we don't see that on our metrics, but we do look at the stacking around schools, to see how that affects the flow of traffic, or where buses are going to be located.
Through the mayor. So staff do look at those, and consider those, they look at sightlines, number of collisions, everything, when they make recommendations for these types of site plan applications. And those recommendations would be included to council. So if staff did not support the application, there would be a recommendation, or information in the report stating that staff are not comfortable or confident that this situation would work.
Okay. I guess what I'm sort of trying to get at, because you said, the council needs to direct staff as to why we need to have a study, when they said there was no study needed. So I'm offering some criteria, both to help Counselor Singh, but also to help you and staff understand what I think is important to be looking at, because this, in my opinion, is a very set of unique circumstances, that since there was no traffic study done, those are the reasons why we'd be collisions, stacking, left turns, additional driveway inputs. So would that help give a bit more clarification to staff?
Through the mayor. So those were considered as part of staff's decision as to whether to permit a full turn access off Strasburg Road, and staff are recommending that moving forward. So I don't know where the value-add would be from recommending that from council.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Anadis?
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up with Counselor Fernandez was questioning on the traffic component and all those variables to calculate it. Would that be done in-house, or would you have to hire a professional traffic consultant to do this?
Through the chair, part of the applicant's original proposal would have some information related to it, and staff would review that information. But they'd also use their knowledge and their experience based on best practices within the transportation industry, and guidelines to make a decision to put in the site plan application.
Okay, thank you. Question to planning staff. If council does support this potential recommendation for the traffic study, and I would gather, Counselor Singh will ask for the study to be done first as a deferral, and then this comes back to council after 12 weeks, whatever times it takes. At that time, that we would be doing the study, sorry, doing a reconsideration of the application. If that's the timeframe that this unfolds as, does the applicant have the right, then, once the deferral's been approved by council, and says, "Well, I don't want to wait another 12 weeks, can I take it to the board"? Can he do that right now? Has the time limits that this application's gone through justify him and allow him to do that?
Through you, Chair. The applicant can appeal after 180 days, and that timeline is around March 16th. So if the request for the study takes longer than that, and they choose to appeal, they can, then, for lack of decision.
So he could wait till March 16th, and then go to the board at that time, based on the timing of when the initial application was filed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Schneider? Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Just a little clarification on the classification of pass-by, because I know it's great to have a restaurant in a high-volume area, but, you know, if I want a mama burger and a root beer, I'm going to change my route to go down Victoria Street or River Road to get to the A&W that's closest to my home. So help me understand that, and I just think there's some intentional visits to the A&W. I know the one at River and Victoria, they also do cruise nights, there's a lot of cars fill the parking lot, that attracts a big crowd as well.
Mr. Redman?
Oops. Just hang on a sec. Go ahead. Through the mayor. So other studies have shown that between 50% and 80% of traffic is already in the area to do business elsewhere. So that means 20% to 50% may just be going there, you know, as a destination for the burger. But typically, with those fast food on more material commercial streets, people are already in the area, or shopping for the majority of the customers in those locations.
Okay, well, thanks for that. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. First off, I'm not sure this is a question you can answer, Mr. Redman, but in your experience, is the findings of this traffic review consistent? Would we see more traffic with a gas bar, et cetera, than an A&W?
Through the mayor. The figures associated with the drive-through restaurant, I think, are on the higher end than typical. So this would be more like a McDonald's or a Tim Hortons-type restaurant. So it's based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' drive-through restaurant guidelines, so those look at a whole bunch of different industries. And my understanding is, this business would generally generate less traffic than a McDonald's or Tim Hortons, so those McDonald's and Tim Hortons would skew the traffic a little bit higher. But other than that, yes, I would agree with the findings in this report.
Okay, so, I'm not sure to answer this question, but supposing we go through with the traffic study, and I'm not still 100% sure on the criteria, but we go through with the traffic study on this, on a proposed use that has less traffic, and it comes back saying that there's going to be problems, we're going to turn, I guess the question is, can we, if they go through the normal process, they could actually get approval for something that's going to impact the site worse? Is that correct? Or has there ever been a situation when we don't approve something based on, forever, based on the traffic conditions? Because there has to be a recourse for the property owner. Follow my questioning? I guess I'll put it this way. One of two things is going to happen. Either the study's going to nix the idea of the A&W, which by proxy nixes anything ever getting done there, because there's a gas station, or it doesn't. So what's our option here, with the pending results of this traffic study? I don't understand.
Through the chair, traffic impact studies typically are used to minimize cut-through traffic on residential streets. They may recommend some minor traffic improvements, but staff have looked at it through that lens. So I'm not sure what value this would add. I would have to defer to planning staff to say what the recourse would be if that came back and council chose not to approve the zone change. I'm assuming that the current zoning would stay in place, which would permit potentially more impactful development.
Okay, this, okay, thanks.
Okay, that looks like it's all the questions we have of staff. So we will now...
Quick...
Another question?
No, clarification, actually, because Counselor Davy said that, because it's a gas station, nothing else would go there.
Well, go ahead, and then I'll ask you to bring forward the recommendation.
Sure, thank you. It's a remediated site, so other uses can be incorporated. Just for clarification for other members of council, in case there's confusion. So I will give the clerk...
Okay, so...
Oh, you need it to be moved first, right?
Yes, you need to move the recommendation, or do you want someone else to do it?
I think my vice chair can.
Counselor Gallois-Silak will bring the recommendation forward from committee, seconded by, I need a second, Counselor Davy? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Actually, before you put that up, is it possible that the pictures I had provided, just for context, if they can be shown? The reason why I'm providing this is, staff, or traffic staff at least, are of a firm assessment that nothing more is required. I respect staff's assessment, but I think I want to bring a certain realism to this, is that we are not always perfect. We have gotten things wrong. We have allowed approvals or placements of particular usage that continues to cause aggravation and pain. I'm sure we thought we were doing the right thing then, but sometimes it's unclear until it's placed, and then you see real-life scenarios. This is an occurrence happening at Lackner and Fairway. That's a four-lane roadway. There, you'll see vehicles backing up onto the road, they're waiting there to get in, because they're all the way around onto the road. If you can just go to the next one. Tim Hortons, sorry, at Lackner, and, my apologies, Slackner and Victoria, not Fairway, Lackner and Victoria. So, as you can see, it's just not a one-time shot. You see traffic constantly, even as traffic goes in, it's always backed up to the roadway. And then, just, Mel did a fantastic job with the picture that she had, but this kind of shows you the narrowness of the road currently, seeing only, coming off of Ottawa onto, if someone wants to go into the A&W, that's a single-lane roadway. The setbacks, if traffic started to back up, it wouldn't take very long, where that traffic would be stacked up to the intersection. So thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, to allow, to show that. The motion specifically speaks to a deferral. Till May 15th, I've allowed 11 weeks as was kind of suggested, or expected timelines for a traffic review study by the applicant's planner. And it is to require the proponent of the zone change to complete a traffic impact report. I initially said it to the satisfaction of our transportation and planning staff. It was my assessment that through the dialogue that would take place today, our staff would see, maybe, perhaps they didn't consider everything, and be willing to review this again. But because of their firmness in saying, "No, we've thought of everything, and no, our opinion still stays the same", I add further, I guess, metrics. So the traffic report be specific to, and take consideration to traffic volumes, collision, driveway, setbacks, and stacking. Hopefully, this provides clear enough direction to staff.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Fernandez. Counselor Davy?
Comments? Okay. This is a difficult one. I know some residents are in favor of the Tim Hortons, I know some residents are not in favor of the Tim Hortons, or, sorry, A&W, pardon me, that's actually a huge mistake, given the context. My concern is this, we've heard from staff that the deadline for when the applicant can appeal to the OMB is mid-March, and we're talking about delaying this to mid-May. And doing some quick math, we already heard from the delegation that a traffic impact study paid for by them is going to be in the range of $7,000 to $10,000. And I can imagine that the fence they're installing is going to be well over $10,000 as well, the noise fence that's not required, that they're simply doing as a negotiation process here. And my fear is, if I'm the applicant in this case, looking at this, looking at the existing zoning, I'm going to say, there's, I've already got $20,000 to throw at the Ontario Municipal Board, for what would ultimately be a worse outcome for the residents in this area. I get it, I understand that we're trying to look at this from every angle that we can, except, and if there is an out, I'd be willing to explore it. But there isn't. The reality is, even if this traffic study comes back and says there's a problem, the fallback zoning on this site is a higher traffic issue, a worse traffic issue than what is proposed. In a way, we're almost, I think, we're lucky if there is a significant traffic issue here, that this proposal is before us. So I'm sensitive to it, and I've put a lot of thought into this, as has, I think, every member of this council, but I think that this is a fair use, and I'm not sure that, I'm just worried that if we don't approve this, that we're going to end up with something that is, that some of the residents are going to like a whole lot less.
Counselor Anadis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Yeah, I'm going to speak about the motion before, the amendment that's before. I share a lot of comments that Counselor Davy has mentioned. When we first looked at this, even the resident that's opposed to this, was their main concern was, basically, they didn't want a 24-hour drive-through. And now, we're coming here as a way to kind of sidestep the whole process in looking at traffic. And I can understand why they don't want a 24-hour drive-through, but the site already is basically zoned for a 24-hour drive-through for a gas station. So to me, it's not going to make any difference whether we approve this, because in the end, it could get worse, as Counselor Davy had said. And one of the things that we hear a lot on council is, from residences, when they have issues with certain things, like in particular, they have issues with the airport, or they have issues with the landfill. But a lot of these sites have been there existing before, and the residents knew way ahead from 45 years ago, that this site was a commercial site. And I can't see why we would go and change the process, change everything, because it's already been there, it's been existing for 45 years, and to add an additional 7, 10K to the proponent here, who's gone above and beyond all the expectations, to me, it doesn't seem like it's going to go anywhere with this, especially when we have had two professional, we've had our professional planning staff say, "It's not going to make a difference". We've had the region's professionals, transportation staff, say, "It's not going to make a difference". We have an opinion here from WSP, with their opinion that it's not going to make, it's not going to make a difference. And even if we do turn this down, there's going to be something there. Those traffic issues are going to be there. They're happening, they happen throughout the whole city. Are we going to stop someone from proposing a use for this, because it's not appropriate as far as for traffic use? When the traffic there is 30,000, we've had, we've got so many, so many other examples of this throughout the city. And I think Tim Hortons is a bad example, as Counselor Singh had put there. That's, I think, the traffic is probably four times as more as you would see, as compared to an A&W. But it was good shock value, thank you. But I really, I think we need to move forward with this. I think we've gone above and beyond, received good planning and good evidence from our staff, and from everyone, and from the transportation staff. Like, it's, nothing's going to change, whether we do it or we don't do it, it's still going to remain the same. I think we're just wasting our time and spinning our wheels here.
Thank you. Counselor Anadis?
Well, this is one of those issues that, do you, or don't you, go with it on this traffic study? I see where Counselor Singh is coming from, and on to some of those items that he's referred to, and, I mean, I like to support it, I mean, I experienced it, so I saw it firsthand when I went last week to meet with Mel and discuss the issues there in front of her house, and experienced the backlog. And it was a difficult scenario. But I also respect the comments from staff of, where the traffic studies may not be needed, and justification for additional analysis may not prove anything worthy, unless you're going to make some alterations to Strasburg Road, in terms of widening it into an extra lane or something, making a specific left-hand turn. I don't know if that's doable or not, but that's probably another issue. I see the residents really have a concern on this, and I like to support the application. And having reviewed it, and looked at it again closely, and reread the whole report, and looked at the details that staff have provided, going to a C8 zone is very good planning, very, very good planning. Because right now with C7, you only got two uses there, and with the C8, I mean, I've got the list right here, of the zoning bylaw, you've got about 30 uses, and there are 35 uses that are good uses for the site. And in the amending zoning bylaw that staff have brought forward, they're deleting five... of them, which are sort of ones that really just don't fit in conference center. Well, of course it won't fit in. So these are reasonable ones to be deleted. So we're down to 30. And of course, restaurant is one of those uses. So I'm, in light of all the issues that have been discussed, whether it's traffic, whether it's environmental, whether it's smell from the burgers, whether it's vermin, whether it's whatever, and this has all been spelled out in all the comments from the residents and comments from, from the delegations who are here, I'd like to make an amendment to Counselor Singh's proposal and really support the application, but with the deletion of the restaurant use.
Okay, well, I think we'll have to deal with his amendment first, which is actually a deferral for additional information. And then if that fails, we can consider.
And that's what I figured you'd say because I figure that's the process to go through. So if that fails, I'd like to make an amendment to the original motion of supporting the C8 zone without the restaurant use.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Most of the debate over the weeks has been around noise issues and type of wall or fence. Those issues are important, but I would suggest that no member of this council would want to live in a neighborhood situation where at an already busy intersection where traffic safety could possibly be made worse by a drive-through restaurant. I'm always convinced that the true experts, with apologies to our staff, are those residents who live at or near this type of location. In addition, I would venture, as someone who used to live in this area, close to this site, I would not want to live in a neighborhood where air quality was affected by offensive cooking odors from such a drive-through restaurant. So I'll be voting in favor of the deferral and a traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. This has been quite a discussion. I don't know if there's any one of us that would want to be living right next to that property. I'm going to support the traffic study. I think Mel has done a great job of asking some questions that haven't yet been answered. Counselor Singh's been working hard on this too. I think getting more information can help clarify the decision. I want to be clear and that I support business investment, but this resident has also invested in our city. They've purchased a home in Kitchener, raised a family in Kitchener, paid taxes in Kitchener. So they're also investing in Kitchener. So I just want to make sure there's the right balance here and a little bit more information and a deferral will just help clarify that.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. So although that there's been comments around the residents knew what they were living next to, I don't think I heard the resident say that she didn't, wasn't aware that it was commercial property because she knew that there was a gas bar there. She knew there was a gas station there. And she said that what she doesn't want to see is the drive-through resident, the drive-through commercial. She didn't say that she didn't want any commercial. So I think that I'm correct in saying that. Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn. One of the other things that we haven't heard about and is ongoing is the emergency vehicles that come out of Strasburg as well as the buses that come out of Strasburg. At the end of Strasburg, which you can't see, is a depot for all of our buses as well as one of our largest, our main headquarters for our fire department. Those are additional conflicts, possible conflicts at that intersection. So when we're talking about doing a traffic study, we have to include more than what the WSP included, which was really the trip rates, AMP, and during the weekdays and the Saturdays. I don't even see a Sunday here. Where is that as well? So I agree with Counselor Etherington, often the people who live in the area are really the experts. Yes, our staff do great work in terms of due diligence around, around planning, around traffic studies because that's their expertise. But the true experts are the ones that live it every single day, who live the traffic, who live around whatever situation that is being presented to us here at council. And we, I mean, we just heard about how important neighborhoods are downstairs. We gave accolades to the hundreds of volunteers who talk to people on the street. Why did we take that into consideration? Because we respect what our citizens say. And we still have some people who were part of that whole strategy sitting here tonight because they're, they're involved and they're committed. And we have a resident here who has done outstanding research. I mean, it's incredible. So let's just take a minute to pause. Let's just take a little extra time to make sure that we get this completely right. There are too many driveways. There are too many possible conflicts and collision opportunities, not only at the intersection, but with the three, four driveways that are happening with this proposed zone change and this proposed site. Please support what Counselor Singh is putting forward. I don't think it's going to be an onerous thing to do. It will only make sure that we are doing the right thing.
Counselor Gazzola.
Yeah, I have a question of Counselor Janetski before. Does your proposal allow a drive-through?
Counselor Janetski.
With the deletion of the restaurant, that means all restaurant uses would be deleted, no matter whether, you know, A and W, whatever. So there'd be no restaurants, so no drive-through required.
No drive-through, okay. All right. I'm glad we had a week between these decisions and that's something we don't always have. And in this particular one, we've had two weeks. On the other hand, there's been an awful lot of discussion, another hour or so tonight. And I'm not, I'm still not sure where to go. What I'm hearing and what I've heard, I think I've heard is that the neighborhood are opposed to a drive-through. We can, if I support Counselor Singh, we do a traffic study and all of that and it comes back and it can come back and agree with what's already been done, do we still get it, do we still get a drive-through? And that's what, that's the whole issue that I see here. The neighborhood don't want it. Now, I know we're reminded time and time again that staff recommend this and when staff recommend it, we have to support it. It was interesting to hear staff say that they could put a clause in refusing a drive-through in the bylaw. I would like to, I would like to support that, that sort of a recommendation. And if we were told, well, staff have recommended something and council has to approve it or it's going to go to the OMB, well then, do we need a council? Just let staff deal with it and let it go to the OMB. I think, and I think where I'm coming from, from this whole issue is, and I'm, I'm not a planner and I'm not up on planning issues, but, and I want to revert to what Counselor Fernandez has talked about, and this is, it's this neighborhood issue. But before I go there, last week, before we discussed this issue, we passed some new targets for climate change, for climate change targets for our community. And everybody was totally in favor of it. We were, we've done well, but we want to do a lot better in the next 15 years. What better way than to do away with drive-throughs? We all supported that, but here we have, we have our first test. Now, going to the neighborhood, we have, the neighborhood, the neighborhood lived there, they know what they want. They're no different than we would be if we lived there. I don't live that far away from that neighborhood. I used to take my automobile to the Petrocan station that was there. There wasn't a lot of traffic. I mean, the Petrocan station had a couple of bays. I think you came and you left your car for three or four hours. There weren't people coming and going the way you would have a restaurant and A and W. So the big point, the point that I, that is moving me is that we've heard the neighborhood. Tonight, we heard, we've heard all of these things that let the neighborhood lead and let, let it be city-supported. Well, the neighborhood are leading on this. They've done a lot of work. I know Ms. Dobbs here has done a tremendous amount of work and brought a lot of information to council. Bottom line, they don't want a drive-through. So I'm, I guess I will support Counselor Singh to put this off in the hopes that eventually this council will turn around and, and listen to the neighborhood and do away with, do away with the drive-through.
Counselor Galloway-Silak.
Sorry, just trying to get close to the mic. I grew up in this area, not far from the intersection, have driven it my entire life, continue to drive through it on a regular basis. Where I'm coming from is I understand that, that intersection, no, not as well as the resident who lives right there, but I've driven through it many, many times. My thought is that a lot of the thinking around here is flawed because if there's a traffic concern, that is not the problem of the applicant. That's our problem that we need to deal with outside of this. So we could have a gas station going in there today, which we're hearing has more traffic than a drive-through would. We have a traffic problem. This is what we're identifying. That needs to be dealt with outside of this process. And so I feel like it's flawed. A lot of the logic behind delaying, deferring, we've heard from staff that even with what you've outlined, Counselor Singh, all due respect, staff are saying they've looked at it through these lenses and there's no value added by delaying and doing this. I can understand where Counselor Janetski's coming from with the amendment, and I'm not saying I agree, but with the amendment of no restaurants. That's what the residents asked for. I can see even where Counselor Gazzola is coming from with no drive-through. But at the end of the day, the traffic concern, that's our concern, no matter what goes on that property, period. And so it's not fair to tag that on this applicant. And that's just my opinion. So right now I can't support the deferral or the ask for a new traffic study, but I would, with regards to this application, because I think if we get challenged, we're toast. Because I don't think it's their responsibility. I think it's our responsibility. And if Counselor Singh wanted to bring forward something separate from this zone change, I'd be willing to support it, to say, hey, staff, can you go out and look at this area of road and see what's going on? And if there's something that we need to do before the region's looking at it in 2020 or whatever that number was, I'd be, I'd be supportive of that. So that's just my opinion today.
Hey, Counselor Singh and Janetski, I presume you've just clicked in to speak to your closing Okay. I'll, I'll make my comments very, very briefly on this issue. It is a very complex one with a lot of, a lot of good work and a lot of arguments that have, that have been made on all sides. I think there is, you know, there've been various dock arguments made over the course of the evening around how do things, even like the neighborhood strategy and other things relate to, relate to this. And I think we can't lose sight of the fact that any of those strategies don't preclude our legal obligations to deal with provincially mandated planning applications and so on. And that's what we're going through with respect to this individual application. For me, and I go back to what was the compelling argument that came from the information that was presented at committee, and that's what is in fact allowed on the site right now. And the site right now, as we know, would allow a restaurant or a gas bar and an accessory use, drive-through restaurants. You could have the kind of coffee stand or, you know, or even a burger, depending on how you designed it, that is a drive-through without a sit-down restaurant or minimal seating based on what is already permitted on this site. And so while I may not like it, we can't just unilaterally go and take away what somebody's rights already are on their land. Because if you start that there, where, I mean, A, it's not going to be upheld and B, it's going to really set us down a path that's going to be problematic in terms of dealing with a lot of other applications going forward. So based on that information, I can't support the deferral that's being proposed before us. And I also can't support, you know, taking away the, the restaurant use if that was the alternative amendment that's, that's brought forward. So with that, Counselor Janetski, I'll come to you for your final comment and then Counselor Singh as he's moving the deferral.
Okay, thank you. I don't quite agree with all your comments there about the potential little stand-up restaurant within the gas bar. That's not permitted, in my opinion. However, the question I just want, I just want to leave with everybody here is that with this proposal, the amendment that we have right here before us with the traffic study request, if that is supported and it'll take, as I said, 10 to 12 weeks to prepare, the applicant has the right to take the application to the board. And if he does that, then it's not, then it's out of our hands. This doesn't come back to us. It's finished. We lose. If we also take the scenario of the proposed amendment that I have to delete the restaurant, of course, residents will be happy and the applicants can still take it to the board. We've made a decision, but that's, that's where it goes. Same thing if there's an amendment that comes forward with, well, let's include, let's leave the restaurant in there as a use, but remove the drive-through. Again, if that drive-through is deleted, and that's probably the bread and butter component of the restaurant business, it'll probably go to the board. So no matter which scenario you look at, it seems to be a losing scenario for the residents. It's unfortunate, but that's just the way I see it from my experience. I'm not going to support the, the traffic study because staff have pointed out, we've had this additional study. I've experienced it, haven't been there. I'd like to see the resolution of it, but I don't think it's going to get resolved in any way based on the other comments that I've, that I've received. So you have to take into consideration, if this is supported, this application will not possibly come back to us again.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you. With Counselor Janetski's 40-plus years of experience in planning, and he understands as well that when you take a matter to the OMB, it's a very time-extensive process. And not only the time, but it's a very costly process. You have to take legal counsel as well as, again, additional planning costs and other experts that you have to bring in for their assessments. So it's a very expensive endeavor for the applicant or us if we get challenged on our decision. The process that I'm following through where it's only a delay of possibly 12 weeks and a cost of $7,000 to $10,000 is a very fraction of a cost of what an OMB appeal would be. I'm, I can bet everything I have that that wouldn't make sense for anyone to challenge that, rather especially if they are so firm and believing. especially if they are so firm and believing that the traffic review, the professionals, their assessment would be very similar to the information and evidence that they've already presented to us. What I'm proposing allows us to do is ensuring that we've looked at the site based on how it's situated, based on the traffic patterns, and as noted by Counselor Fernandez, the collisions and mal, as well as the stacking, that we're proposing the current restaurant, the way it sits on the site plan, is situated in a correct way, that it would fit there, that it wouldn't cause further problems. It's not necessarily a way of saying no. It's ensuring that we have the right information so we mitigate problems that we can kind of foresee will probably happen. They may be our problem, and I appreciate perhaps future support because a lot of good stuff has come out of this in us being able to further assess how traffic is managed at that intersection. But setbacks matter as part of the proposal, and this is an opportunity that we can take to work with the applicant. The way I see it, the current zoning allows for a gas bar and already a drive-through, be it accessory restaurant or a drive-through car wash. That's not necessarily a good usage. I'm not trying to play politics with this. If I'd wanted to play politics with this, I would have not supported this through the committee. I heard the rationale put forward by staff in saying, you either have this or you have a gas bar with a car wash. In my opinion, that's not necessarily a good usage. But further from that meeting, I came to a conclusion, as well as getting feedback from the neighborhood residents, that there's more to that than we need to ensure that we've investigated everything. And that is the traffic. The traffic is the serious problem. The drive-through, your liking of it, not liking of a restaurant, I think that's a personal opinion. They may differ, I may differ. But the way that traffic is managed, because of change in usage of this business, that can be impactful for aspect of safety of my ward residents. And that's very important to me, any resident. That's very important. We need to ensure the decisions we make are the right ones, and they don't cause future problems. And I think this allows us to get that assurance. What Counselor Yonetski is proposing, if this is defeated, of just prohibiting a restaurant usage but supporting the zone change, we all know that it will lead to an OMB appeal. And what will happen is, we will incur costs because we're fighting a battle of arguing against what our staff already have supported. And on top of it, even if we were successful, the current land use allows for worse-off usage. We wouldn't get anywhere further. It's like jumping into a puddle and hoping I don't get wet. I don't see any wisdom out of that. I think we need to get more information to make sure that we mitigate all the necessary measures that we can put in place and working with the applicant. That is the right course, and I hope I get the support so that we can ensure, give confidence to our residents, that we looked at everything before we moved forward in changing usage on that intersection.
Okay, so, Counselor Gazola?
Okay, go ahead. I want to know if Counselor Singh's motion is defeated, do you then take Counselor Yonetski's motion?
I will go to his amendment next, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. So, a recorded vote has been requested for the motion to defer until May 15th with the request that we get a traffic impact report specific to traffic volumes, collisions, driveway setbacks, and stacking. All those opposed? The motion is not successful. So, Counselor Yonetski?
Well, the motion as before us is the original motion from the previous committee report, and basically, I'd just like to just amend it by just deleting the restaurant use from that particular, from this application recommendation.
Is there a second for the amendment? Counselor Fernandez? Okay. I think we've had all the discussion, recorded vote has been called. All those opposed? Motion is not successful. We'll now go back to the original motion that has been moved and seconded. Do you want a recorded vote? Yep, okay. Sorry? Yep, okay. Opposed? Motion doesn't carry. So, that means that recommendation is defeated. Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, can you, is that sort of the end of it then? Okay, so, here, the application has not been approved, which means the current zoning remains in place, and the applicant can proceed based on the current zoning at the present time? Okay? Everyone clear on that?
I don't think we're that clear that it's going to happen.
Counselor Davy?
Sorry, I just, I want to make, I hope everyone's clear on what they just voted on, but what just happened is, we just sent ourselves, we now have to hire outside planning consultants, we can't even use our own planning consultants. I think we have to hire outside legal counsel to fight our own staff at an Ontario municipal board hearing. This is something that...
That's a decision that council made.
I just, I want to make sure they're clear on that. This is a decision that we made, and I hope everyone stays tuned to see what happens.
Okay, Counselor Singh, and then I'm going to move on.
Just very quickly, I'm kind of surprised that Counselor Davy is trying to key in to speak. We had an opportunity to try an avenue where that's not a direction where we would have gone, but it's based on decisions. So, I think that blame can't be put on just some, I think it was a collective in steps.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Thank you, everyone. The decision's been finalized. We'll now move on to our next delegation, which is Mr. Blair Mullen with respect to one of the items under Committee of the Whole. Mr. Mullen, welcome. Oh, hold on, your mic's not on. Go ahead.
Whoops. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We would like to thank you in advance for taking the time to listen to us tonight. We are here to speak in regards to tender T-17023 Gas Pipeline Construction. My name is Blair Mullen, and I am the General Manager of Clearway Utilities, Inc. In January, the City of Kitchener went to the open market, and we want to emphasize the open market, requesting companies to submit prices for the gas pipeline construction contract. The contract did not have a pre-qualification process and is a three-year term contract with an option to extend for a further two years, which would ultimately result in a five-year contract for the installation of various gas mains and services, as well as meter work throughout the City of Kitchener. The tender closed on February 2nd at 1:00, and a public opening was held at 2:00 p.m. Clearway representatives attended the opening where prices were read out, and our tender from Clearway Utilities, Inc. was the low bid out of the four submitted. On February 23rd, we reviewed the staff report for contract T-17023 on the City of Kitchener website and discovered that the recommendation was not to award the contract to Clearway. We were completely shocked and surprised, as we have had no reason to believe that we would not be awarded the contract. It is our position that we were compliant with the tender and are ultimately the right proponent to complete the work. Our team is well-known and respected in the pipeline industry. For example, our Executive Vice President Lon Mullen holds over 40 years of experience in this field. He is a past President of the Pipeline Contractors Association of Canada. He has chaired the Labor Negotiation Committee for more than 10 years and was a team lead in the first alliance agreement with Union Gas in 1999, which is still in existence today. He has managed and been responsible for the installation of well over 1,000 kilometers of both steel and plastic gas pipe in Ontario, Quebec, and the Maritimes. As for myself, I have been in the industry for 15 years, managing up to 150 field staff during peak construction periods, meeting customer KPIs, and ensuring gas pipe was installed effectively, efficiently, with the utmost quality that all clients expect. As recently as 2014, I managed this very contract for the City of Kitchener when I worked with another contractor with great results. As a company, Clearway has been in business for more than 44 years in the underground infrastructure construction business. We have welded hundreds of kilometers of large diameter steel pipe and have fused numerous kilometers of plastic pipe with the same tooling that would be used to fuse gas mains here in Kitchener. We have worked on live pressurized systems such as water main, storm, and sewage pipes, as well as steam lines in Ontario, Alberta, Saskatchewan, and as far away as the Caribbean. Clearway has a multimillion-dollar bonding capacity and with over $20 million in construction equipment, with the intent to expand that fleet with new and updated trenchless equipment and specific tooling for gas pipeline work. We have over 100 unionized field employees working in underground infrastructure construction currently, as well as over 30 full-time administrative and support staff, and we're planning a new office in the Kitchener area. To disqualify Clearway due to lack of experience from the majority of the scope of work is clearly inaccurate. From the closing date of the tender until the posting of the staff report this past Thursday, the review staff had plenty of opportunity to contact Clearway to request additional information on our experience as stated in your tendering information package. In addition, Clearway reached out to the engineering staff on February 3rd by phone, and then with a follow-up email on February 8th, asked if there was any further information required. This was to ensure that we had the appropriate resources to meet the timelines for execution of this contract. Our position and request is that the city defer the decision at this council meeting and give us the opportunity to meet with your senior operating and procurement staff to give them the insurance that we have the knowledge, experience, and experience to complete the work, and that we have met all the specifications and requirements to complete this contract safely and with the utmost quality that the City of Kitchener would expect from any contractor. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming in. I do understand that you have shared your concerns and comments with staff, and staff have communicated with you earlier today?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. There aren't any questions for you? Ms. Palmer, did you want to add anything? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'd reiterate that we had received the concerns from Clearway Utilities on Friday. We did respond to them today to address their concerns. As you can appreciate, the gas pipeline construction contract is, has quite detailed requirements around expertise, and it's not just related to underground infrastructure, but specific to the welding of steel gas pipeline and plastic gas pipeline. Based on the experience provided in the tender, we have deemed Clearway to be disqualified based on the experience they provided.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, I'll deal with that tender first. It's tender number 11 in Committee of the Whole. Somebody want to move it? Counselor Iñárrez, seconder. Counselor Fernandez, any discussion? Counselor Gazola?
I just want to, the recommendation talks about planned work and provisional work. What's the difference?
Ms. Palmer? Or Ms. Palmer?
So, I'll start, and if Ms. Fletcher would like to take on afterwards. So, based on the schedule that Utilities Division comes up with for the planned work for the upcoming construction season, that's what's bid under planned work. Provisional items are, if they have to do a slight change to the design and a different-sized pipe or additional length is required, then we can utilize those provisional items where needed.
Okay, thank you. I just, the other question I have, this is substantial, substantial surplus on this project, close to $2 million. We, in our budget for this utility, we had capital works of $7.6 million, and this is a $2 million surplus? What, do we have plans for that? At Budget Day, I had plans for that sort of thing. It's really not Ms. Fletcher, I think it's more of our financial department.
Well, Ms. Fletcher's going to answer the question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Through the chair. Well, $2 million in this provision seems like a lot of money that can be eaten up very quickly with two or three projects. One of the reasons that we have a bit of a surplus is we do leave a contingency in the budget when we put our work plan together for any one given year. So, some of the provisional items that Ms. Palmer just described, or if there were unforeseen things that arise. The other thing is, this line, we do quite a bit of work for the region, and so, we're always aligning our plans with the regional plans on their roads as well.
But at the end of the day, we're looking here at a $2 million surplus that we weren't counting on. That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So, council has approved the tender as recommended. Thank you for coming in this evening. The, we'll now move on to the remainder of the tenders. Somebody want to move them? Counselor Iñárrez, second, but Counselor Fernandez, any questions on number one? Questions on number two? Questions on number three?
I have a question on two.
Okay. Go ahead.
I wanted to know, are we committed to, we're setting aside, we're approving a tender of $350,000. Are we committed to buying a certain amount every year? Does this cover, does this just freeze our price for the next number of years?
Okay, so, Ms. Palmer and Mr. Redeman have keyed in, so, Ms. Palmer, do you want to start?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we are not committed to that. The actual spend will depend on the level of activity that is required, so as renovations are planned. It just gives us fixed unit prices for that period.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez on this one? Okay. Any on three? Any on four? Counselor, number five, Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. So, I noticed that this one is over budget by $230,000. And the, sorry, a little bit further on, on item nine, we have a surplus of $675,000. I know, can I just ask, will, can we carry the surplus from the number nine tender over to the number five tender, so that we don't have a $250,000 deficit?
Mr. Chaplin?
Through the chair, yes. That's what happens. You recall that we have the uncommitted capital account in the capital forecast, and so, it's through that account that we transfer any surpluses on tenders, and that's the account out of which we draw where we have deficits on projects.
Okay, so, do we know which one of these will go first in terms of, because I mean, the Hugo Crescent one, sorry, is that right? Yeah, Hugo Crescent and Laurin Avenue is one that was part of another process. Would that one go first in terms of work, or does it?
And are you asking because of cash flow consideration?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not an issue. We do carry a balance in the uncommitted capital account to provide for this cushion, and so, that balance is sufficient to fund the project deficit. But even if not, both are construction projects in 2017, and so, it wouldn't be a cash flow issue, given they're both scheduled for this construction season.
Okay. Is it possible to understand why this one is over so much, considering the grant that we're getting?
Mr. Redeman?
Mr. Redeman?
The mayor, there are a couple of factors that have resulted in the, in the price being higher for this. One is there's a school and a retirement home in the area, so we need to build a temporary access road from Homer Watson to make sure that there's twenty-four, seven access. Also, there's deep services in a narrow corridor through here, so there's a bit of additional risk associated with that.
Okay, okay, that's, that's helpful. Okay, I think that was the only question I had. Yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now go to...
I have a couple of questions on five.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I'm curious, when I look at our capital forecast in that ARP account, we already have negative amounts of a million eight twenty-three. Doesn't that mean we were already overspent in that, in that account?
Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I take it you're referring to the capital forecast balances?
Yes, page C one forty-five.
Right, so you're correct that we are drawing down the uncommitted capital account, but you would also need to look at the existing balance in the account in the schedule of existing balances, so there is a balance here that's...
Prior to this year?
The amount that will exist at your end, yes.
What was that figure?
So I'm showing an opening balance of three point five million, which is being drawn down by one point eight million. And was that the number you referenced, Counselor Gazola?
Yes, yes. Okay.
So that would leave one point seven million left in the account, out of which we can either fund deficits or add to with project surpluses.
Okay. The other question I have, I have two questions. This is all part of our so many kilometers that we want to complete. How many kilometers is this doing? And then the next question I'm going to ask was about a million dollars a kilometer, so I hope we're getting four kilometers out of here.
Mr. Redeman or Ms. Palmer? Whoever wants to take it?
Through the mayor, so the current estimates on average for construction projects are five million dollars per kilometer. This one is quite high because of the deep buried services as well as the need for the access road. So on this, on this project specifically, we're looking at about five hundred and fifty meters.
You're saying it was five million dollars a kilometer?
That's correct. It's five thousand dollars per linear meter, which is the value we've been quoting for the last six months.
Okay, my final, my final question, this, this grant that we have here, where, where is that from and are there more to come?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, this represents funding under phase one of the new federal infrastructure program. And yes, we believe there will be more coming through phase two, although the amounts and the timing is not yet clear.
But we, we have, I believe it's, what, about three and a half million dollars this year from that grant? There's, there's another million, two on another project. Isn't it, isn't it accepted that we will get similar type of grant like that every year?
Not necessarily. We had expected that our allocation would be at some format of a per capita allocation. It was not, and so it's unclear to us right now what the basis will be for the allocation in phase two.
But this is, this is part of all the announcements by the federal and provincial governments of all of this infrastructure money that I keep hearing about every day. We have received, this is the first we've received, is it not?
That's correct.
So, should we not be expecting similar amounts down the road? It has nothing to do with this project, actually, it's just in general terms.
I would say no, because the total allocation in phase one is different than the allocation in phase two, and they've not yet disclosed what the basis will be for that new allocation in phase two.
It's going to be billions. It's going to be billions. I hear it every day. That's fine, thank you. I have a question, I want to go back to, to number four.
We've already passed that one, it's...
You went slip fast. A quick question, what, what is this to do, it's a million dollars for, for Microsoft? What is it for?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, it's for all of the software that we license through Microsoft, which includes desktop applications as well as software that operates our, our servers and data center.
So, is this, when you buy a license from them, is it for a period of time or what, what does this cover?
Basically, under the enterprise agreement, we're essentially, we, we are purchasing the software along with the perpetual right to upgrade it, so that's what ensures that we always stay on the current version of the application. The select agreement is different in that that applies to software where we don't necessarily need to stay current with the application, and so that would be for applications that are deployed on a, not on a corporate-wide basis where it's not as critical that we stay current with the, the current version number.
So is this an annual fee you have to pay us to stay current? Is it, is it three hundred thousand dollars a year? Or is this for growth? I saw the growth there and I, you know, does that, since these purchases could be related to growth, are we going to increase our PCs and/or our staff by those amounts?
Well, certainly, we need to purchase licenses sufficient for the number of PCs we have, and so as we add units, yes, we need to procure the licensing for them, but this covers the entire program. So this is, this does represent the annual ongoing cost to maintain our software licensing with Microsoft.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Yonetski, yours is on number five? I'm on nine, I'm on number five. Okay, number six then, Counselor Yonetski.
Yeah, number six, two, two questions. Number one, this is in my ward and it's Aberdeen Road, and as noted in the report, it was supposed to have been done last year as part of the project with Duchess Avenue and Marina, but it didn't, it didn't get done, so it was deferred to this, to this year, which is fine, not, not an issue. And so I would assume that they would just go ahead and do the construction because everything's been done, but I'm puzzled as to why I need consulting, an expression of interest to do this if we already did this last year and it's just a carryover. Are we sort of duplicating the work? Duplicating the expression of interest? We did it last year.
Mr. Redeman?
Through the mayor, this, this tender's coming forward because it's a resourcing issue, so we don't have enough staff scheduled for two thousand and seventeen to manage the construction, so, or inspect the construction. So this is for a construction inspector only for the work for two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, so when the work, when the work goes through, you need the engineers to follow up and be sure it's all done, so that's what they're hired for?
Through the mayor, they're there to inspect the work to make sure it meets quality and is done correctly, so we do not have staffing resources to be able to do this project this year.
Okay. I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from. So if this was done last year, then that work would have been covered by another consultant from last year? Was that part of a contract or was that done by the city?
Through the mayor, we would have done that in-house last year, but we have a staffing issue for this year based on the number of projects we have lined up and then this having carried over.
So because of the referral from last year, it's costing us another fifty thousand dollars?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
And, and it's a deficit here, so the money comes from, as you pointed out in the paragraph above, the accelerated infrastructure replacement programs, there's extra money in that kitty.
Through the mayor, it would take, you know, it may shift some projects in future years based on, on the total budget we have in that account.
I'm sorry, say it again, I didn't understand that.
So we try to fit the projects as best as possible. There's sometimes a little bit of extra fund in the ARP program, but we do try to slot in the amount as correctly as possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, Counselor Yonetski. Okay, number eight, oh, number seven, Counselor Gazola.
No, no, I'm, I'm on, I'm on number ten.
Okay, well then hang on till we get there. Number eight, number nine, number ten, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
Ten, the report says that there's a twenty-four percent reduction in costs in, for that tender job, whatever it is, proposal. Where would I have seen that in the, in the budget?
Ms. Fletcher or Ms. Palmer, whoever's...
Through the chair, I actually can't answer your question tonight, but I can follow up. I had flagged this for Ms. Palmer a little bit earlier that I'm curious whether we're making an apples-to-apples comparison when we're quoting a twenty-four percent reduction. So the welding work was tagged to a much larger contract historically. We have a very focused contract moving forward, so I'm just, I'm a bit concerned as to whether it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
Okay, I appreciate if you could, because I'd like to know where the twenty-four percent is.
Ms. Palmer, you want to add something?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, Ms. Fletcher, I found this information just before we came down to council. So I was able to pull, this was part of the previous gas pipeline construction contract that we had with a contracted vendor. This was a line item within it that we did as an extra under that order, and when I pulled out that hourly rate pricing compared to this hourly rate, it is twenty-four percent lower in this new contract.
Okay, so, excuse me, all, the tenders number one through ten have...
I have a question on nine, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
It's, it's on the Sheldon, is that a, is that a one-year or two-year project? It's in the capital forecast as a two-year project and now, is it, is this tender, how long is this, how long is the tender going to take?
Mr. Redeman?
Through the mayor, so I don't have the details on whether the construction would spread over two years. It may be a case where we're just spreading the funding over two years. Sorry, so clarification, it's likely just the top coat of asphalt is happening in the second year?
Well, the money is, if you look in the capital forecast, the money is split almost evenly between the two years. So I, I was curious when I first saw it, is, are we doing next year's work this year? You know, and why would we do that?
Through the mayor, I can follow up on that. It is also a large project, it's nine hundred and seventy-five meters, so that may be a factor. I just don't have the details with me today.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve, any questions? If not, then the tenders have been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We'll move on then to the reports of the committees and we'll start with Counselor Ionitis. Balance of Community Services, if you can click in, please.
No.
Click in, please. Go ahead.
It's been moved by myself and seconded, seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh that the Community Infrastructure Services Committee recommends the following recommendations, item one, two, three, four, dealt with five already, six, seven, eight, eight, nine, and we dealt with ten, be approved.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Singh is on one of these items? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on item number one, I had declared a conflict because of proximity to that, to residents and overlooked on that conflict declaration, so...
That's fine.
If that can be voted separately.
We'll note that. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, if we can vote on number four separately, please.
Okay, so we'll deal with one and four first. So, number one, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously with the noted conflict by Counselor Singh. Number four, a recorded vote's been requested on number four. All those opposed? That's carried. Balance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Counselor Davey, Finance and Corporate Services?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dave Schneider that items two and three be approved. We've already dealt with item number one.
Okay, thank you. Seems to be lots of people wanting to clue into this one. Counselor Gazola?
I just want to pull out three separately and ask for a recorded vote.
Okay, so be it. Counselor Fernandez?
Number two separately.
Okay. And Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, mine was on item number two as well, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a quick comment. It doesn't change anything, but can I make that comment?
Yep, please.
I just wanted to say that I, I'm going to flip-flop, I think is the word, but not, not necessarily. I wanted to modify my opposition to the ranked ballot issue. I still believe the two thousand and eighteen election is too early for the process and that all regional municipalities should introduce ranked ballots at the same time, but I think also it's a fairer system that should be considered and implemented in the next election, that would be two thousand and twenty-two, and we should prepare for that. Now, I think my wishes are reflected, those comments are reflected in the clerk's recommendations, so I just wanted to make that known because that's different from what I said last time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll deal with number two first. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Number three?
I have a favor.
Okay, recorded vote, that's fine. Opposed, that's carried. Move on to Planning and Infrastructure, Counselor Singh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item number one has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway Seelock.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davey?
Thank you. On this one, for those watching at home, this item that we're voting on is about reducing our carbon footprint as a municipality by eight percent by two thousand and twenty-six. And to be frank, Mr. Mayor, I was hoping this is an item that we could support unanimously at committee. The vote passed on a recorded vote ten to one with Counselor Yoneski voting in opposition. Counselor Yoneski did not comment as to his opposition on that, and I'm curious if you would like to comment if there's any tweaks or anything that we could possibly look at or change as to why he voted against this.
Okay, well, he's certainly entitled to. Did you want to make any comments, Counselor Yonetski? Go ahead.
Yeah, the answer, the question that I had raised at the committee regarding how the method of calculation the gases were done was answered by staff, but I didn't accept their answer because I didn't think that was the answer that I was looking for. I was looking for something different and I never got anything further on that, so it was on that basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, recorded vote? All those opposed? That two is carried. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We have one motion coming forward from Counselor Gazola. Counselor Gazola, want to bring that forward?
I'm going to speak very quickly on this. This is actually a, a good news story as far as I'm concerned. We have a, we have a, basically a new heritage committee with about fifteen people that are interested in it and are committee, it's a large committee, and they're very, they're very keen to be very active, not only on the, on the advisory committee, but also some subcommittees. And so, according to our city rules and regulations, we were starting to run into quorum problems. There are only one or two subcommittees and they all want to serve on, on, on a, a lot of them on both of them, so it would, would be too many people, or to take a vote on that, we had to change the quorum rules. So we're, by doing this, we're able to leave the quorum rules as they are for the advisory committee votes and meetings, but for subcommittees, we didn't, we don't have to abide by that. So that's all it is. So, that's all it is, isn't it?
Okay. So, is there a second or for your motion, Counselor Gazola? Second by Counselor Fernandez, Counselor Singh?
Yes, there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gazola, so from my understanding, this is just a housekeeping. Now, the, the subcommittees, they're not really passing any business, they're just bringing recommendations to the Heritage, I'm new to it, I know you've been on it for much longer, so they're just bringing recommendations, but ultimately, it's the Heritage Committee that would make any decisions.
And the rules don't change there. The quorum rules don't change there.
Okay.
Counselor Marsh?
Just a question of staff, is there any procedural problem with this motion to, to change the definition of quorum for the same committee?
Through the mayor, no, there's no procedural issues related to, to the motion. The quorum was changed previously down to fives to ensure the committee could meet its legislative requirements. This maintains its legislative requirements while allowing more people to participate on the subcommittees.
Okay, thank you, I fully support the motion.
I'd like to give credit to staff who eloquently prepared the motion. I can take no credit for any of the wording, it is correct, I know, because they did it.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. No other new business. Just on the regional council update, you will note that the first ion train has arrived in the region, which is, which is good news. And just a reminder that, starting in March, the new garbage schedule will be kicking in, and people may be getting some, some calls on that, and you should refer them to the regional call center if they, if they have any. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
It deals, and it's something that I think council is well aware of, in the last several weeks, we all received a, an email from a former city councillor asking us about the notations on our gas bills regarding the new cap and trade tax or charge. And when we, when this was introduced, and it, and we were discussing it back last fall, I was very adamant in trying to get some kind of notation on our billings in, in order to, to point out what the charge is for. And we had the notice on the billing for the, for the month of November, and I think January, but the, the, the actual billing started, it was really effective February the 1st, before we saw it, and there was no, there's no notation on it. Now, we've, I've been, we're told that, that the premier won't allow us to show it separately, that it has to be included in our delivery charges, so should we not, should we not leave that note that we had on there originally until, until this can be shown out separately, if it ever can be? That's my question.
Okay, staff have a response to that? Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, Counselor Gazola raises this issue by email, I believe, two weeks ago, and I responded at that point in time. The direction that was given by council or the commitment made by staff was not for a perpetual notice on the bill. It's certainly our intention to rotate messaging around cap and trade as a part of our ongoing bill messaging, but we also want to avoid confusion around other rate changes, so for example, we have the water and sewer rate change coming up, and so there is a risk that we can confuse that rate change with additional information. And we're also limited in terms of the number of comments that we can put in for conservation, safety, and rate change messages on the bill. So, the bottom line is that, yes, this will be an ongoing communication, but not a standard item on every monthly bill.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
I believe for transparency reasons that that, that should be on all our bills until that, as long as that is shown, as, as long as that is hidden in our delivery charge. I mean, it's, it's a one-liner, it doesn't take a lot of room to, to, to just advise. We, we have room to set out HST and all, a lot of other things. It's just a, just a reminder to our customers that it's there, and it's something that we really have no control over.
Okay, Counselor Gazola, I, I think staff have responded, I think council did previously give the direction, and staff have, have followed that direction. I think as stewards of the gas utility, it's not our role to be using the ga, the utility bill to make political statements, and I think we have lots of mechanisms with which we can, we can communicate if, if need be.
Is that a, with all due respect, is that a political statement? We're just indicating to our customers, and, and that, that, that factor is causing our customers a substantial increase in their gas bills this year, is, is that? I, I, when we dealt with this back in the fall, I was under the assumption that that note would remain on the gas bill over the entire period. I, I don't remember it being a two-month decision.
Okay, and I think Counselor Gazola, again, I, it's, I think as was explained by staff at the time, we are regulated by the province when it comes to this business, and we are in a rather unique scenario in regards to other municipalities, and so this was a way of addressing council's concerns, but also staying true to the direction that has been provided by the province. Counselor Etherington? Yeah, we are in questions and answers. Sorry, are you on this item, or?
No, questions on this side.
Okay, Counsel, just hang on one sec. Counselor Fernandez, were you on the last item? Go ahead.
So, if we, Mr. Chapman, if we can't put it on the bill, is there a way that we could identify, or just, because we're going to continue getting some questions for a little while, can we put something on the website that, at least when people have that question, that they can find that information on there? At least what the, sorry, where the regulations are, sorry?
Through the mayor, perhaps what I'll do is recirculate the email I sent, and I listed, I think, about a dozen communications channels that we've used to get the messaging out, and one of them is a website that is still active on the city's webpage, there was a hyperlink to it. So, there are many ways that this message is getting out, the on-bill messaging was only one of them, and as I indicated, it will be a part of an ongoing communications campaign to bring that messaging back.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor, two-part question, excuse me. We have a situation in my ward at 270 Spadina Avenue where upcoming intensification of a poorly maintained 60-unit apartment building is squeezing out, has squeezed out, about 50 vulnerable low-income families and individuals. Now, this means we have recent newcomers, refugees, seniors, and others who are really unfamiliar with our landlord-tenant laws, who have been severely impacted by this type of gentrification occurring, I see it occurring anywhere within easy reach of LRT routes. So, I've got a two-part question to staff and to you, Mr. Mayor. Because the reens and parts studies, in my opinion, do not seem to deal with this issue of growing gentrification that I think is going to get worse, my first part of the question is recognizing this is a landlord-tenant issue perhaps, but what can we do at the city to address this issue, which I think we're going to see a lot of? And secondly, can you ask for increased support in these cases from regional housing, social, and legal services to deal with this type of problem?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to tackle the first part?
Yes, as Counselor Etherington stated, this is a landlord-tenant issue, and so when staff become aware of the situation or were approached, we direct those individuals to community legal services, who is the right organization by which to help deal with the, help the, the tenants deal with the situations you're referring to. In terms of the city's role, we, as we just talked about today, we're doing affordable housing development incentives, certainly the issue of gentrification is something that is being considered through things like parts and reens, but, but if you're speaking specifically about, you know, individuals that are potentially evicted from a building like you referenced, that really is a landlord-tenant act and should be dealt with by the province.
And there's nothing we can do, Michael?
There's not, so we, we've talked to regional staff about this situation. We had a building inspector on-site today to look at it. If there are things we can do, we will, but, you know, we have no jurisdiction or authority in this area, so we'll do what we can, but it, we're very limited.
Okay, thank you. And the regional part, Mr. Mayor?
Well, certainly I'm prepared to, to raise it and discuss it with, with regional staff. I think it, it speaks to the, the bigger issue of, of affordable housing, which, as you know, we dealt with during our, our strategy session earlier today, and, and in fact, we'll be finishing that during, right after council this evening. I, I think, you know, parts of this is, is also the basis of, of some of the municipal requests to the federal government in terms of affordable housing dollars as well, that, you know, because it, it's not just focused on things like supportive housing, but rent geared to income housing and so on.
And I agree on that, but I think, as you saw earlier, it's going to be several years before we get affordable housing in place, and the number of people who will be displaced by, around the LRT routes, someone needs to take action on that.
Well, I think, as we heard from staff earlier, that there's a component of it that may have a longer period of time, but there's another component of it that potentially we could see ourselves taking action on much, much quicker than that. And I think, you know, we still have to provide, finish that session off, and that'll come back as a report in the next, the next couple of months to our council.
Thank you.
Counselor Singh?
Yes, quickly, Mr. Mayor, just want to bring light to this, to do with McLennan Park. I think you are all aware of some of the challenges that the park has had to face. Wanted to quickly get an update from, from staff as to where things are at with the, the region, and the reason why I'm deciding to bring it for, you know, bring this up in this forum as opposed to continually engaging with staff. Again, this is a, a district park, a park that's frequented by residents of all our respective wards, so it's an important matter to all of us, the, to bring the park back to its original use, well, full capacity, so just, staff just want to take a quick minute to update, and ultimately, as things evolve, continue to provide a bit of information to all of council. Do you have any information?
I will.
Oh, no, just generally, just as a, where things are at as to the, if you want, I can give that update then. No, no different than information I've received, just simply with the region, what they're doing, and where, what the timelines are for the, for the, the work to begin. If you feel comfortable, I have those specifics, but I thought I, I let you do it, so I don't muckle it all up, but if you prefer, I can, I can quickly give an update.
I mean, as, as a high level, we're doing remediation of the Great Lawn this, this summer in partnership with the region. I, I don't have the specific details in terms of milestones with me.
My apologies. I, again, Ms. Fletcher probably has so much to manage that this is probably one tenth of the percent that she has to deal with. Anyways, the, the, we're close to coming with terms with the region as to the, the parameters of the project. Work will begin later on this spring around the, the Great Lawn area, and it's projected, hopefully, for the park to be remediated by the end of this year, if everything does go into plan. So, the park will be in the midst of a lot of work happening, so parts of the park will not be available for public, but it's, finally, works will start to begin to, finally, to my satisfaction.
So, you're, you're giving us both the question and the answer?
Well, I, I asked the question because I don't want, you know, obviously, I'm not the expert, I haven't dealt with it on a day-to-day basis, I thought staff
Yep.
may have been able to clarify better, but I don't want to lose the opportunity, I thought I'd bring it to notice of council now that I had the opportunity to do so.
Okay, and this doesn't, doesn't just apply to you, but just a reminder to all of council that the understanding is if we have these kinds of questions, we will get them to staff ahead of time, because then they can be prepared to answer them
Sure.
at a council meeting. Okay, moving on to first reading of the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Fernandez, actually, sorry, first reading, it had been moved by Counselor Etherington, seconded by Counselor Schneider, that leave be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole. There is a late starter, no, there isn't a late starter in light of the decision. So, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Ionitis, the council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Counselor Ionitis?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. That the bylaws considered by this committee be taken as read a second time and be recommended for enactment. Do we have a mover? Counselor Galloway-Seelock. And we have one item.
No, you got to take a vote on that.
All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried.
I'll move the committee appointments.
Okay. Do we have any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. We don't have any other additional items, so.
To move that the committee rise and report? All in favor? No, you got to do that.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, and that the proceedings and the recorded community interests and conflicts taken the meeting of the committee of the whole, held this date as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed, and it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Davey.
Okay, all in favor? Oppo, sorry? Oh, are you folks here for any particular items, or?
I'm not. I'm not.
Okay, and, okay, great. It's been moved by Counselor Etherington and seconded by Counselor Schneider that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered serially by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Marsh that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried.
Now we deal with?
Oh, and now we go back into Planning Committee. Mr. Clerk, do you need a minute to reset the system, or we'll just continue on? Okay, so we will, we will continue on in Planning Committee. Folks who are comfortable with leaving their input afterwards, or leaving their, giving their input to, to staff.